Approval of last month's minutes, November meeting on the 13th. Does anybody have any corrections or adjustments? Mr. Dune? Okay. Make a motion if you approve.
I'm sitting.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's take a step back. I received a couple of letters from last, since last month. One is from Diana Hird, H-I-R-D. "Mr. D, I'm a resident North Highlands section of Phillips Town. I am writing because I understand the ZBA will be reviewing an application for cell tower construction on Vineyard Road and Phillips Town. My understanding is that the tower will be 180 feet in height, equivalent to a 19-story building. I think everyone can agree that such a structure does not comport with the surrounding landscape, in particular the state park land and nature trails in the vicinity. Further, I'm not convinced that a tower is needed. As a resident of North Highlands, I have never experienced a drop call or an unsent text on my cellphone from my home. Thank you for your time and effort in reviewing my comments." The second letter received is from Rockwell Road Association, but Mr. -- the gentleman from Rockwell from the association is going to do a little presentation tonight, so I'm not going to read the whole letter. I got a letter from Houlihan Lawrence from, let's see, branch manager Sylvia Wallin, W-A-L-I-N. She speaks basically to why people buy houses in a community for the, for the historic and the hills and the valleys and so on and so forth, and says she basically that to ask about the devaluation of property values, to ask about whether an eyesore is real or imagined, to ask for the mathematical methodology of looking backwards historically at impact of sales, if their major nuisance factors is introduced as pointless. Basically say that most people buy up here for the beauty and the, and the view. All right. First thing I'm going to address is, Mr. Caduoso, just your letter. We'll go according to the numbers, your new information that you've submitted. All right. This is a letter from you, and you've submitted some new information. First one is the application form. I see that you changed the application form, amended it to read 140-foot monopole tower that may be painted brown.
Correct.
You mean you're going to paint it brown? Is that what you're saying?
In the alternative to the 180-foot tower, we would propose 140-foot tower, and we're offering also a brown color as shown in the visual renderings.
Okay. Number two, you have supplement alternative site analysis. Submitted here is a supplement alternative site analysis from Vincent Xavier dated November 27th, 2017. That includes confirmation that any extension to the tower and McKeel's Corners require a setback in height variances, and will be closer to the residence than a proposed site at 50 Vineyard Road. The board is well aware that you're going to need an extension to the tower. We spoke, we've been speaking about this probably six months now, you know, that you would need a variance, a height, and probably a setback, and the board is certainly open to, open to that, if that would mean that you wouldn't have to put a tower at Vineyard Road. The other thing is that it'd be closer to the residence. That tower was installed in 1998, so I think most of the homes up there were built or bought after that, and they were purchased or built with the people buying them knowing that the tower was there. Where this other tower, I think the people in this area built or bought those homes never expecting to see a tower.
Yeah. I don't think that's the case, but I think--
Why don't you think that's the case?
I think the point of the alt-- well, number one, the resolution of approval, which was passed by a bare majority and actually Mr. Sessone voted against it, that included a specific provision that limited the height of the tower to 100 feet, to 100 feet. The height limit in that zone is 110 feet. What we've shown in our radio frequency engineering, even up to 210 feet, it still wouldn't resolve the gap in coverage for Verizon Wireless.
Okay.
Secondly, it would need both a height variance, at least one side yard setback variance, also a variance from not having road frontage, is my understanding, whereas the proposed facility, even at 180 feet, certainly at 140 feet, meets the height limit, meets all the setback requirements, and does have road frontage.
I'd like to just mention a couple of things. In terms of the, your refutation of the fact that there were no houses at McKeel's Corner when the tower was built, the owner of the property testified last meeting that that was the case, that it was all empty lots at the time.
No. No, that's not the case.
No?
As a matter of fact, Ms. Myers is here now.
Okay, then I misunderstood. Okay. And the other thing I want to mention is that in terms of the McKeel's Corner being closer than the Vineyard Road site, the Beadie and Watson survey, which was done, you know, in person, showed a distance of 350 feet when you measure there by their legend from 60 Round Hill Road and something like 200 feet from some of the Rockwell houses.
Well, that's just not, that's not correct. That is simply not correct.
Well, that's what the Beadie and Watson survey says.
That is absolutely not correct.
And you're, you're referring to the Google map, which is, you know, there's a dispute whether that is correct or the, or the survey is correct. I think the survey is correct.
Well, the, the, let me make this perfectly clear. The survey does not show there's a house within 200 to 300 feet from, and if you, and if we pull the survey out right now, we could take a look at it, but I could tell you, if you can show me on the survey where a house is within 200 to 300 feet on the Beadie and Watson survey--
Who else?
Okay.
Sure. Let's do that.
Mr. Aldrich, how close is your house to, to your property line to that tower? Do you know?
It's from the center of the tower to our property line is just about 200 feet.
200 feet.
That's property line, though. That's not a house.
Yeah, that's the property line. That's not the house.
No. It's a, excuse me. To the property line or to the house?
To the property line.
To the property line, okay. Well, I think, before we go through all this, I think what she's saying is the property line.
Well, then the, then the property line--
Is that mine correct?
Right, right.
She's speaking to the property line.
Yeah.
That's good. So, number one, we meet the property line setback.
Right.
We meet the residential zone setback.
Exactly.
In fact, McKeel's Corners does not, and in fact, McKeel's Corners, we show, is approximately less than 150 feet, about 139 feet.
Yeah, but you went back to the, you went back to the original, you referred to that, July 6, 1998. And in the resolution, one of the conditions was under C, condition C, "Applicants shall construct a tower footprint in such a way as to avoid the need of future construction should the height of the tower ever be increased through the co-location of any cellular carrier."
And it conflicts with another specific requirement, that it shall not be raised in height, that it shall be limited to 100 feet.
Right.
More importantly, though, the code provision is 110 feet in height.
Which you need a variance for, which is what it's open to. Let me, okay, let me put it this way. Is there any other thing to prevent you from doing that, you know, if we gave you the, gave you the height verification, and what are the, what are the variances you might not need? Is there anything else that would prevent you from doing that?
Sure. Number one, it doesn't work from a radio frequency standpoint. Number two--
Okay.
Number two, if I may finish.
Sure.
Number two, it's speculative to say that you're going to grant all those variances because there's not an application for those variances. Number three, the timeframe of gaining those variances. Number four, obtaining permission from the property owner is purely speculative at this point, to be able to build a 200-plus-foot tower at that location.
That 200-plus foot, okay. We have an RF engineer who's going to say that 190 would do it, so--
He's going to say that?
Yes, he is.
Okay. So that, that's--
I'm just informing you.
That, I would love to know when those discussions happen--
Right after you.
Because that's not what, that's not what his report said in the record. So if there was expert day discussions since then, that's fine, but--
Sure.
The matter or the fact is, our expert testimony shows that even at 210 feet, there's still a significant gap in service.
Right. You have experts, we have experts. That's the way it works.
Sure.
You understand that. Okay. Next, what are we here? Number three, a supplemental RF engineer. Submitted here is a supplement report, and I guess you named a lot of legal cases in here. I guess what is the point, basically?
So, the supplemental RF report confirms three things. Number one, that the facility does provide personal wireless services, although we don't believe that that's necessarily relevant, other than to the extent that the Telecommunications Act does apply to this application. That the handheld call test is anecdotal and unreliable, and that's what I think the case law also supports, but nevertheless, that the call test, at least the readings, show that, that it is consistent with what the Piercon report showed, and I believe that that is also supported by your RF engineer, that the call, the handheld call test methodology is unreliable. And finally, a short response to the Menke's report dated November 28th, wherein Mr. Menke says that, speculatively, that if the proposed tower in Nelsonville was not approved, that there would be a gap on Route 301, and he also goes on to say that it's uncertain, in his, in his opinion, which gap is more important to Verizon. And what the supplemental RF engineering report from Piercon showed was that the gap that was still left, even at 190 or 210 feet on Route 9, would, would still be a significant gap, would have far more impact on number of users up in that area, including the fact that that area has a commercial location with approximately 36 buildings and numerous users in comparison to the small area on Route 301, which only has five residential buildings. And in fact, that area is actually covered, as Verizon showed in its maps, within vehicle service. So again, the area of in-building coverage, which is, which is what the basis of this application is partially based on, would not be satisfied in the area of Route 9 to the north from a substantially larger non-compliant tower on a speculative piece of property at McKeel's.
Okay. Number four. Oh, the question?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure. Anybody, anybody has a question, I mean, you should break in here, okay?
Yeah. Does Verizon own the, the cell tower at McKeel's Corner?
No, neither.
Okay. Who owns it?
I believe it's a company Crown Castle.
All right.
Would they give permission to allow your client to pursue variances?
Well, I think, I think number one, it's not a matter of giving permission because a new tower would be required. That tower was not constructed to be doubled in height essentially, so it would require a new tower. And then the question is, would the new tower be adjacent to their property, inside their property, on Ms. Myers' property, somewhere? I think that's pure speculation at this point.
Well, in terms of their position on to adopt your terminology, a new tower, would they object to that, or they, would they be in line with an application to pursue variances at that location for a new tower?
I could not speak for them on that speculative basis.
Would you be able to provide that information to the board as to their position?
I am not sure if I could or I couldn't. It would, I don't know how they would respond to that question. I don't know whether they would respond or not respond. And I'm not really sure where exactly you're talking about. Are you talking about a new tower inside their compound that they have secured rights from, from Ms. Myers, or are you talking about a Ms. Myers property as a competing tower? There's a lot of variables with respect to what you're requesting.
At the same location where McKeel's Corner is located, where the existing tower--
So the existing tower would have to come down?
Yeah. I mean, under that, I just wanted to understand your position, because one of the things that you mentioned, in addition to it wouldn't give you the frequency or the coverage that you needed, which is a separate issue, you raised another issue about, well, I'm not sure that the owner of the property would go along with constructing a tower, or increasing the height of a tower, or seeking variances for a tower at that location, so that's--
Yeah. I think what I said is that it's speculative, and the record doesn't have any information in it with respect to whether a new tower could be placed there by way of the landlord's permission.
I'm just saying, to the extent that the board needs that information, in other words, one of the requirements, obviously, and standards of this application are alternative sites, would you have access to construct, improve, change alternative sites? I think that's just an item of information that would be useful to the board.
I, I think what the code actually says is that the standard for the alternative site is whether it's undesirable for a number of reasons. And I use the word undesirable because that's actually the term and the criteria that the code provides, and we, and that includes both technical or community impact issues, whether it's undesirable. And I think the record we've shown is that from a technical standpoint, it doesn't work, but clearly it meets the undesirable standard as set forth in your code. And we've also submitted additional information showing the different impacts from a 190 or 210-foot tower at that property, including the fact that it would require all those variances, is non-compliant, would be visible, in fact, from 30% more land area than, than the proposed site at, at 140 feet, and, and we've documented all that in our last submission.
Yeah.
So I don't think that, I don't think the code requirement is that we have to prove it doesn't work. I think the code requirement is we have to show that it's undesirable, and I think we've met that standard.
I, I think maybe we're, we're speaking past each other. I understand that there are other issues that perhaps the, from an engineering standpoint, there has to be an agreement to disagree. I think what I was focusing on, you mentioned that it's speculative as to whether the owner of the property where the current tower at McKeel's is located would or would not support a change, modification, reconstruction, however you want to term it.
Sure.
I'm simply stating that that information would be important to the board, and I think it's relevant to the criteria that's built in to the code to have that information. So we're just asking that--
I mean, the landowner's here tonight, and she can certainly speak about whether she would want 190-foot or 210-foot or some other height tower on the property. I mean, I certainly have no objection to her providing that information to the board, and I haven't spoken to her in advance about that, but--
So Verizon, as I understand it, your client is, has a lease relationship at the tower at McKeel's?
Correct.
But the owner's here?
The owner of the property is here.
Okay. Who you're leasing it from? Who, at the McKeel's location?
Who owns the underlying parcel at McKeel's? Ms. Myers is, I believe, in the back of the room.
Okay. You said that the tower would have to come down. I thought by prior testimony, it always said that the tower, if you put up the Vineland Road Tower, that tower would have to come down, because--
No, I said Verizon would, would decommission its facility on that tower.
All right, so the tower, the commission has to come down.
I, I didn't say that. I did not say that.
That means that they would come off, the other ones might stay on.
Oh, just the one company is going to come off?
Verizon would, would go on the new proposed tower. I can't speak for anyone else.
So that means that both towers would still be there.
Oh, so, and then the other towers wouldn't have a problem with the signal being, because this one's so close? That was, my understanding was the signal was the problem.
The signal for Verizon is the problem. I can't speak for the other carriers.
We'll see. We have both.
Verizon would decommission from McKeel's, though, as a condition of this approval.
Okay. All right. Next one is property value.
Can I ask you--
Sure. Go ahead.
They're, they're unrelated, but, you know, I think they should be brought up. In terms of, you know, as I understand the law, personal cellular service, a town cannot deny having adequate coverage of personal cellular service, but you're talking about in-building coverage. Does that, is that covered under that?
Yes.
And that's really a question for, I think, our attorney and our cellular expert. And my second question, as I said, they're unrelated, but I'm sort of curious too. On all the paperwork, we talk about Homeland Towers LLC and New York SMSA Limited Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless. What is that entity? I mean, what is that entity? I mean, are we, are we dealing with Verizon, or is it Homeland Towers?
You have both applicants as co-applicants.
No, no, but who is the actual company that we're dealing with?
You're dealing with both companies. Both companies are applicants on the application.
So you're telling me this is a form of a partnership?
No, I'm not telling you that. I'm telling you that both applicants are co-applicants. Homeland Towers is proposing the tower, and Verizon Wireless is proposing the wireless facility on the tower. The tower itself is a personal wireless service facility, as is the, as is the portion of the antennas, the equipment, the cables, that's operated by Verizon Wireless.
Okay. And is the normal term doing business as?
For whom?
The way this is proposed, doing, I just find the wording very strange.
New York SMSA Limited Partnership is the, is the entity, and they do business as Verizon Wireless. That's correct.
Is Homeland Towers--
I'm confused.
--a subsidiary of Verizon Wireless?
No, they're unrelated, they're wholly unrelated. They have no relationship, no corporate relationship. As far as, as far as in-building coverage, the courts have clearly said that in-building coverage is a gap in service, and in addition, we've also shown that there is also, other than in-building, gaps in service, particularly at the 2100 megahertz band.
Does Homeland Towers hold a lease to McKeel's Corner?
Correct.
Okay.
No, not to McKeel's, I'm sorry, to Vineyard Road.
Who holds the lease to McKeel's? So Homeland Towers does not, does not hold a lease--
Homeland Towers has nothing to do with McKeel's.
Homeland Towers has nothing to do--
Correct.
Okay. Four, property values. Submitted a revised submission based on comments raised by the zoning board, including an additional tower in Phillips Town. McKeel's Corners, slightly relied upon a lane appraisal's report. The only thing, I read these property value appraisal reports, the only thing I don't see is, it doesn't explain to me, anyway, as a, as a layperson reading it, it's sales, you know, tells you what the house is sold for, but doesn't tell you if, whether they actually lost value or not. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I don't agree with that, but I think--
Well, can you explain to me how it shows that?
So what it shows, it shows, it shows what houses sell for that are within proximity or visibility of a tower, and not within proximity or visibility of a tower, and it compares them on similar attributes and shows that the sale price is not affected by the visibility or non-visibility of the tower.
What similar attributes does it, does it show, other than--
It looks at square footage, it looks at number of bedrooms. He includes in the report a number of different items to try and compare houses. Obviously, very rarely do you have any two houses that are, that are identical, but what he does is he looks at and compares the houses in different, different metrics, which is, which is part of the appraisal methodology.
I don't see anything about number of bedrooms here, and--
Generally, it's square footage in, in most of the, in most of the items.
Yes, it's square footage, but it doesn't even give an idea of how much property the house has. So a house with a large amount of property is going to sell for higher than a house with a lesser amount of property, so that's not a very complete picture of, of the value of the house.
Yeah. You know, this is the same methodology, as I mentioned, was actually cited in the approval resolution approving the McKeel's site. So it's a methodology that's been used in many different applications, and it's a, it's an accepted methodology.
Well, it still isn't complete.
I understand your point, and the expert did, you know, did rely on that, on that methodology.
Yeah. And also, in addition to that, the, the properties that you added to the, to this report on Stevens Road and Sprout Brook Road, you, you said that those are, that had, they had a view of the tower, and they don't have a view of the tower. Or even if they do, it's so far away. If, maybe some of them might be able to see it, but I don't think any of them could see it, frankly, because I live in that neighborhood. And it's so far away as to be unimportant in, in valuation. You didn't, you didn't--
And how far away do you think it is?
Thousand yards. More, more.
Thousand yards?
Yeah.
I would say the houses on, that you mentioned, Old Albany Close Road, are probably a good mile and a half.
And the property she's talking about, I physically went and stood on the lawn, turned
360 degrees with no leaves, I didn't see any tower.
Right. So those are--
And which property was that?
That, that comp, and if all the other comps are like that, it brings the whole report into--
Well, I'm sorry, which property was that?
Sprout Brook. The one on Sprout Brook Road. And I know where the cell towers are. There's one up at HUD, there's the Stone House, there's the one in Courtland, there's the, and then there's the one up on the Water Tower at Graymore. I couldn't see any of them, and I know where they are. All right. Any other questions? All right. And next one is visual--
Resource assessment. Submitted, he submitted from Saratoga Associates, a response to the comments from the public, analyzed McKeel's Corner site compared to proposed 50 Vineyard Road by site, by way of view shed mapping. Want to explain a little more about that?
Sure. So what Saratoga did is it looked at, it looked like, it looked at the area based on the view shed map of what would be visible by acres, comparing the 140-foot tower at Vineyard Road and the proposed extension at McKeel's, and it showed that Vineyard Road would actually be 30% less land area than extending the McKeel's site. It also included a number of visual renderings showing the visibility of the McKeel's site as it would be extended, and it actually showed that from Round Hill Road and McKeel's site would actually be much more visible, whereas at 140 feet, the proposed Vineyard Road site would be below the tree line.
Okay. Our next one is the county planning referral. Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Anytime, no, please.
I'm sorry. In terms of the visual impact, I mean, our code talks about that we can ask, and I think we did at the last meeting, visual impact from public lands and public trails, which really isn't done. All you're doing is showing the monstrosity that was built in the 70s as a microwave tower, which unfortunately does exist, but I don't think it behooves us to add anything more that's going to necessarily ruin that view shed.
And that microwave tower--
So this, this to me is incomplete.
Yeah. I think, I think the point of that was that there's, there's already, there's already that impact, if you believe that's an impact from, as you call it, the monstrosity that's in the park and already there. If there was a specific location, and when we did the multiple balloon tests, we specifically asked the board for specific locations to analyze, and just to say to analyze from, you know, trails without being very specific, I think is an impossible task for the applicant to perform an analysis. Now, if there's a particular place that you thought was of specific concern throughout the process, I'm sure we would have certainly looked at that, and as I mentioned before, we've had, we've had at least two different balloon tests in this project. But the fact of the matter is, is that the Fawnstock Tower is there, it is in existing condition, and if there is visibility from, from any park in that area, it would obviously, you know, in most cases include that Fawnstock Tower, which is not even close to what's being proposed in this particular application, particularly at the 140-foot height.
But it's apples and oranges, you know, and if you were doing due diligence, you would look at basically Fawnstock lands and have picked a couple hypotheticals and then given us something to look at. That was not done.
Well, I, I think just to say hypotheticals, I think would be--
It was a path of sort of least resistance that we have this big tower that's in the next township that's there, but adding other towers doesn't necessarily, you know, help.
Make one wrong.
Right. Exactly. Exactly the cliche, you know?
Well, it does, it does set the existing condition, though, particularly in those particular areas.
Any more questions on that? County planning referral. Submitted here is an email from town engineer dated October 20th, confirming that the county planning department comments appear to have been prepared without the review with RF report previously submitted. I'll read that email. The email is from Ron Gaynor to me and to our secretary at our, and CCTV, Mr. Caduoso. Just an FYI, based upon a recent letter received from the PC Planning Department. I guess the letter means the 239, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. On, on the above matter, it appeared that they did not review the RF report submitted by the applicant, which was originally transmitted to the county in the earlier referral package sent. As a result, I personally spoke with Barbara Baroso, city, city planner, I think she's the county planner, Putnam County, this morning, and have dropped off another copy of the report for her information and comment. Hopefully, this should address the concerns raised in her prior 239 response letter that we received by the ZBA. I guess my first question is, why are you submitting this?
Well, number one, the Putnam County Planning Department letter recommended a modification, and it recommended two items to be submitted, both of which had been previously submitted. And at the last meeting, the comment was, was that Putnam County was against the project or something along those lines, and I had specifically mentioned that it appeared that the county planning department did not have the full application, or at least did not did not have the full application, or at least did not review it prior to issuing its, its recommendation. And the comment was, you weren't aware of that, of that situation. And I specifically mentioned that there was an email from Mr. Gaynor pointing out that situation and that I would submit it. So I submitted the email showing that, that it has been in front of the planning commission, and now they do at least have copies of the reports, which they had recommended in the modification referral to be submitted, when in fact they had previously been submitted.
Right, but I still have, the only thing I have from the county is not, no approval.
Well, no, what you have is, is you have a recommended modification.
Yeah, there's no approval.
And it says, it doesn't have to be an approval. And what it says, it says that...
The county doesn't have to approve, is what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay.
And it says that it recommends that certain information be in the record, which is in the record and has been in the record. And as Mr. Gaynor's email says, he notes it's in the record, and he submitted it again to her, just to make sure she had a copy.
But it also recommends about Nelson Mill Tower and so on and so forth.
Which, which again, was in, which, which was part of the record.
Part of the record, the applicant shall verify that no other area carries or tall structures, including fire towers, exists for co-location to fill any gaps in coverage. It is apparent that it would be preferred if the applicant co-located in or modified existing tower in McKeel's Corners to avoid the construction of one or both of the proposed new towers, thereby avoiding the potential significant visual historic and environmental impacts to the new sites. So the board may wish to encourage further vetting of alternate sites to their proposed locations. Let's see, where are we? Landscape plan.
Yes.
Do you want to explain that to us, please?
Yes, it was a request last month by Mr. Sestone for landscaping. So we included a landscaping plan, a mix of spruces, both white spruces and blue spruces, viburnums and rhododendrons, particularly along the edge that butts the residential district.
Okay, how high are these trees?
So the proposed five white spruces and the proposed four blue spruces are eight to 10 feet of planting. The viburnum and the rhododendrons are five to six feet of planting.
Any questions on that?
What about the actual tower itself? You, you have plantings, but what about the tower itself? How do you propose to camouflage that?
Well, what we've shown is, is the brown monopole, and being below the tree line, being below the ridge in, in the photographs, we proposed a brown color to help it blend in. The code allows for you, is if you wanted to recommend as part of the approval, some other type of finish or some type, other type of finish, that would certainly be something we could, we could consider.
And, and did you say that you would camouflage it as a tree?
We didn't offer that, but if the board required that as a condition of approval, it would, it would be something we would certainly consider.
All right. I've seen those towers, they don't look like trees to me, no. But it's better than a big brown pole. All right, thank you, Mr. Gudusso.
Mr. Chairman, with, with your indulgence, I would like to show the board and the public some of the renderings. We have a, a short PowerPoint. We made copies for the board in case you can't see it. What it basically does is, it pulls out some of the photographs from the materials you already have, but I know it's voluminous, and we wanted to try and distill it. So with your permission, I just would like to have Mr. Vincent Xavier run through the PowerPoint, and what I'll do is I'll hand out a copy of each of the slides.
Sure. Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Xavier. I'm the regional manager for Homeland Towers. As Rob indicated, what we tried to do is take some of the most viewpoints from the closest homes and put them on the PowerPoint so that people could actually have a chance to see them. Matt, if you can?
It's Manny Vicente, I'm president of Homeland Towers. I just want to tell you why we're presenting this, because we've worked hard to reduce the height of the tower from 180 feet to 140 feet. And I think it's important for us to, there, there is a difference, there is a big difference in doing that, and we wanted to show that specifically from the closest homes.
And as I said at the beginning, none of the photos you're going to see here are new. Everything has been in previous submissions from Saratoga Associates. And in the PowerPoint, you'll see the actual source of the photo at the bottom of each one. It may be hard for the public to see on the overhead projector here, but this is a shot from the intersection of 301 and Route 9, looking to the east. The image on the left is from our original photo submission, which depicted 180-foot monopole. Matt, I'm not sure if you can see the mouse there, but you'll be able to see that at 180 feet... I don't know if one more will do it, though. Well, I can see it from here, I have pretty bad eyes, but the image on the left, like I said, is 180-foot monopole, and as you can see from this intersection, you can see the tower peeking above the ridge line. The image on the right is from the same location, and you can either see the balloon, which was floated at 160 feet, and then there's an arrow showing where the tower, top of the tower would be at 140 feet. As you can see from this image, or from this location, the tower will appear below the ridge line, and this is why we propose a brown monopole, because we think it would blend in well. This is an image from the day of the 160-foot balloon float from 60 Round Hill Road, from the elevated back deck in his... This is from 60 Round Hill Road, the Gorovik property? The balloon was floated at 160.
That was 180, the first one.
No, no. That, that was the very original submission. I showed you the first set in order to document the difference between the 180 and the work we've done over the past six months to try to get as low as humanly possible.
Okay.
The second balloon float was floated at 160. We originally proposed 150, but at the advice of your consultant, we flew it 10 feet higher than even we were proposing at the time, because at that time, we were trying to propose a 150-foot tower. Subsequently, we worked to get it down as low as possible, and you'll see, the first arrow on the top shows where the 160-foot balloon was visible. And then you'll see the second arrow below that shows where the top of the tower would be, if it's a 140-foot tower. And as you can see from his backyard, it would be well screened with the trees.
Okay, this is from 60 Round Hill, right?
That's 60 Round Hill, from your backyard, yeah.
You come there now, and I'll show you, and you'll see that bloody tower so far down you wanted to go.
Okay, all right, all right.
The next shot, you don't like my attitude too bad.
The next shot, because there was, there was discussion of the McKeel's Corner site, we asked Saratoga to provide simulations. This is again a shot from 60 Round Hill, showing, on the right, the language in the yellow arrow indicates where the tower would be at 140 feet. And on the left, it shows the top of what potentially would be a 210-foot tower at McKeel's. As you can see, even though it's not feasible at that height, if it were to be increased at 210, you would actually see that tower now from 60 Round Hill with a flashing light at the top.
Well, it's simple, what we're talking about, McKeel's is 190.
RF engineers talk about 190, not 210.
Well, that hasn't been on the record yet, but...
Well, it's going to be on the record, so I'm just trying to give you a heads up.
Well, we showed 210 because we analyzed it up to 210 to show that even up to 210, it doesn't work from an RF perspective, and that's why we stopped it there.
Okay.
Next one, Matt? This next one, I'm sorry. The next one, this is from the report from Saratoga dated November 13th. This is from 100 Rockwell Road, viewpoint 18. As you can see, the top arrow is pointing to... I'll wait for the phone. Oh, you want them to work? Yep. So, so as you can see, the arrow that's pointed at the top is where the 160-foot balloon was floated, and the arrow below shows where the top of the tower would be at 140 feet. So again, from 100 Rockwell, Walk Rockwald, it's well screened through the trees.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give, of course, you understand, I'm going to give the neighbors who live there a chance to speak too on this.
By all means, I think everybody should have a chance to speak. But that was an actual photo from the backyard of 100 Rockwell. The next one, this is from the backyard on the, from the back deck of 43 Rockwald. And as you can see again, the, the arrow at the top shows where the 160-foot balloon was. The second arrow and subsequent simulation shows the potential view from this backyard at 140-foot tower, simulating a brown monopine. As you can see, again, pretty well screened by the trees.
I see the red, I said, I see the red balloon on top. And then I see a tower underneath it?
There is a tower underneath it, the second arrow...
How is it, how is it, how is it blocked?
How is it simulated?
Yeah, how, how is it blocked?
It, I said screened, I said it was screened by trees.
It is?
Well, there's a difference between a screen and having a direct view.
And actually seeing it.
And a direct view. I know you're being...
No, no, I can see it, that's why I'm questioning you.
Um, yes, the towers are not invisible. We're doing our best to minimize it and to decrease the height to minimize...
That's all I asked for.
That's it, I'm not, we simulated it there to show that you could actually see it. And yes, you can see it, but it is screened by several trees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one.
Next shot, please. And this last one, leave this last one. This is from 25 White Rocks Road. Again, you can, you could just barely see the balloon through the trees there, and again, the top arrow is showing where the balloon was at 160, the second arrow is showing where the top of the tower would be at 140.
Okay. If you wouldn't mind, Chairman, I just wanted, I hear some of the comments, I've been to a few of the beatings, and I just want to make sure people understand, we take these visual analysis and studies seriously. Saratoga is one of the best in the business, and it is not photoshopped. This is done properly with the right methodology. We floated the balloon at 180, we then floated it at 160, we have now proposed a 140-foot tower, and what we're trying to do is we're trying to mitigate the views. And I think we've done a fairly good job of doing that. And I think we, by lowering the tower to the minimum that's necessary, I think we've improved a lot of the views that people have from them homes. But, one of the things I want to make sure people understand, this isn't a Photoshop program you, that we do it in the office, this is done by Saratoga, a preeminent visual analysis company in New York State, and for that matter, the country. So it isn't photoshopped, and it isn't just placing something on, on a map. And we take that seriously. It's a great expense and work that we, we do this, and we've done it a few times now to try and give the board all the information they need to make a decision.
Oh, no, I just hear the comments from the public.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, sure. All from a considerable distance, distance away. What would have been useful for me is to see what the neighbors in Vinland who basically have this tower in their neighbor's backyard is, are looking at.
Which location, we, we have a location right from Vineyard Road in both visual analyses, in the original visual analyses, in the updated visual analyses, it's literally right there on Vineyard Road.
I'll have to go into my notes and look, but I can tell you that.
It's, it's there, it's in the, it's in the visual report. Plus, we've also taken photos...
Because they're all from a considerable distance.
No, they're not, there's one, there, that's not correct, there's one directly on Vineyard Road.
There's a lot of distance here, and there's, it's not really showing what the neighbors have to look at.
Well, I don't think that's correct. We specifically took photographs from the neighbors' yards at the request of the neighbors, and that's what those photographs were, specifically from those, from those properties.
You took pictures of neighbors' yards, but you didn't take it from the neighbors who bordered the, bordered the property.
Yes, we did, in fact, we did. That's, that's Round Hill Road and Rockwald and, and White Rocks. Those are exactly the photographs that we just showed. Those are the exact locations.
Uh, yes.
Not yet.
Not yet, Tom. Please, it's in order. I don't like it. Next, I'm going to call Mr. Campanelli.
Good evening. I have no table here, okay. My name is Andrew Campanelli. I am an attorney, I represent seven or eight families from the area who are opposed to the application. I handled quite a few of these, and I'd like to go through some of the issues raised by the applicant in the latter submissions. My first request to all board members, if at any time you have any questions about, anything about this application or the telecommunications act, please ask me. First, I'd like to address an issue that was raised by the attorney as to the question of whether or not the alleged gap in service, which I'll get to in a minute, might somehow be remedied by amending or, or changing the existing facility at the other location, which is owned by Crown Castle. Yes, that facility can be changed. The real problem is not that there is any difficulty in changing it, but the difficulty is that Crown Castle owns that facility, and the applicant here is Homeland Towers, each of which, neither of which provide personal wireless services. They are what we call site developers. These are companies that don't provide any personal wireless services. What they do is, they build facilities and lease space on their facilities to companies that do provide personal wireless services. And Verizon is a customer of both of theirs. And ironically, Mr. Gudusso represents both companies, and I know this because I'm personally representing...
Mr. Chairman, I have to object. This has nothing, this has nothing to do with me, has nothing to do with who I represent...
When you were talking, he didn't object.
Well, it's my right to object.
It's my right to ask you to please sit down. Please sit down.
Okay? Please sit down.
I'm not attacking this gentleman personally, I happen to know he's a fine attorney.
I'm not going to take interruptions from you, or him, or anybody else, as simple as that. There's things you can handle later on down the road in court. Go ahead.
The problem is, Homeland Towers is looking to build this facility not to provide personal wireless services, but to make money. Crown Castle is in the business of making money. The problem facing here in asking Mr. Gudusso to inquire of his other client is that he would have a conflict of interest. Because if Crown Castle were to accept a deal with Verizon to increase the height of the tower, which they likely can do under the terms of their written lease, that means Homeland Towers, Tower is no longer necessary, it's not even necessary now, but it would be no longer necessary. So, the client he's representing tonight would suffer if he were to go and make the request that you asked of him. And that's why that's never going to happen. So that's number one. Now, I heard some excellent questions from the board regarding the lane appraisal, and I respectfully submit to the board that the lane appraisal can be dismissed really easily by the board because it's what I call nonsense. My favorite line in this appraisal, and Lane appraisal, of course, has done many of these in connection with these applications, and surprise, surprise, they never, ever find that a cell tower reduces property value, it doesn't matter if it's four feet away. It never reduces anything. In fact, on the second page, it says, quote, "There is no diminution in the value of homes with a view of a wireless telecommunications facility." I respectfully submit to the members of the board, at least some of whom I assume are homeowners, you can use common sense. Would you rather buy a home that had a cell tower looming over it, or one that didn't? Stands for itself. Now, this report provides you no insight, and the reason is, as was quite well picked out by your board member, you have no way of knowing the facts and circumstances under which these homes were sold. You don't know what their value is. They might have sold for much more if the cell tower wasn't there, whatever the price it was. They may have had 10 bedrooms and a, and a jacuzzi. You have no way of knowing this. You also have no visual images, so they can't show you that they are similarly situated to the homes here. The homes here are going to see this facility if it's built. As you sit here today, they provided you nothing that shows you there would be similar views here. So this report isn't worth the paper it's written on it. By contrast, you have written letters from professional real estate brokers, and in those professional real estate brokers' letters, they identify themselves as licensed professionals. And they're not merely licensed professionals who are familiar with real estate markets in general. They are acutely acquainted with this specific real estate market. They know this town. They know why people buy homes here, among other rings, for the pristine view and the night skyline. And they say that in their professional opinion, it will reduce the value of the nearby homes, which is precisely the type of adverse impact that you enacted the special use permit, provision in your code to prevent in the first place. It's the whole purpose you have this code. And this type of evidence is to be weighed equally with any appraisal as accord with the federal court's OmniPoint case, and I'm just going to give you the site. Actually, it's in my brief, it's the OmniPoint case. And federal, the federal judge in the Second Circuit Court of McKeel's ruled that letters of this type from professional real estate brokers are valid evidence which can and should be considered by the board.
I don't want to take room.
No, no, don't put it on top of the chair.
Chair would be great, thank you so much.
Take your time. We're not going anywhere.
When you refer to your submission, your brief, which is, is it the memorandum in opposition?
It is, it is. At the time we prepared and submitted that to the board, we did not have the supplemental submissions from the applicant, which is why I'm constrained to address these new submissions this evening. Now, with regard to the Saratoga Associate submission and the previous submission, I'm somewhat confused because I, I thought on the original submission, they did not include any images taken from the properties of the actual homes who would be most adversely affected. And that renders that completely null. When an applicant submits an aesthetic impact analysis, the sole purpose for which it's being submitted to you is supposed to be to give the board an accurate assessment of the actual adverse aesthetic impact that this thing is going to inflict on the nearby homes. Not surprisingly, most applicants choose to omit from the analysis images taken from the homes which will suffer the most dramatic adverse aesthetic impacts, and I believe in the initial submission, wasn't in there. But now, they claim, well, we've got four new ones in here, and it's near homes. I submit to the board, you can listen to your homeowners, especially Mr. Jordan, and determine whether or not the images which have now been submitted, the new images, have been strategically chosen to be taken from locations which minimize the actual adverse impact on the home. Mr. Jordan, so my understanding is, it's going to loom over him. Every time he sits on his back porch or looks at his back, it's going to be looming over Every time he sits on his back porch or looks at his back, it's gonna be looming over him and his family. And that's specifically the type of adverse aesthetic impact which is perfectly logical and legal grounds to deny the application. The RF reports. I like to refer to them as fiction. You know, I've been doing this for many, many years. And typically, when a wireless company has a significant gap in service, it is something that is extremely easy and extremely cheap to prove. For example, if you have a significant gap in service, one way of proving that you have a gap in service, an easy one, is if it's Verizon, and before I go any further, for the record, Verizon's own website says it has absolutely no gaps in the area, in the precise area where this applicant says it has a gap. And you have seen zero evidence, zero direct evidence, from Verizon saying it has a gap in any type of service whatsoever. Nonetheless, they did a drive test. And a drive test is great. It's cheap and it's easy. You take a telephone, you put on a recording device, and you drive through an area, and the device records the signal strength every few milliseconds. And so what happens is, after a one-hour drive, you've got a huge amount of information. You have all the actual signal strengths. And that usually is a valid record to show you what the actual signal strength is. And they're not claiming that that signal strength is insufficient to maintain calls or that there's a significant gap in coverage. What they're doing is what I call the bait and switch. I've actually lectured before the New York State Conference of Mayors on this. What they do is, they say, no, we have sufficient strength outside, but our gap is in in-building coverage. What does that mean? Well, we take the actual signal strength and we multiply it by an arbitrary figure to figure out the reduction in signal strength we're gonna lose when the signal passes through the materials of which buildings are made. And I submit to you, in every single case I've ever come across, when they make this representation, the truth happens to be the opposite. If they had an actual gap in in-building coverage, all they have to do is go inside the building and hold up the phone, and it'll show you the actual signal strength. In every single case I've ever handled where they did not do that, there was no gap in service. In fact, and again, I apologize, I didn't see their supplemental information until yesterday. This is a transcript from a case I handled in 2001, and it was T-Mobile before the town of Hempstead. They did the exact same presentation you have before you now. And what they did is, they did a signal strength test, and they drove through, and then they said, the problem is, we have a gap in in-building coverage. And then homeowner after homeowner got up and said, we've been in every single building. And when we got in every single building, we were able to make, initiate, maintain, and conclude calls with no loss in service. But the best part is, after the engineer got up, their RF engineer got up and testified on the record, and this is a matter of public record, I'm gonna make you a copy and get it to you. The RF engineer was asked, by the way, did you go visit any of the sites? Yeah. Did you go inside any buildings? Yeah. Did you make any calls? Oh, yeah, my wife called me. So after he testified that there was absolutely no service inside the building, he himself testified that he received a call.
Now, you ready to available to the RF attorney?
I am.
Okay.
Now, not surprisingly, Mr. Gorioso and I have had this argument more than once. And Mr. Gorioso likes to refer this evidence as anecdotal evidence. And I am eager an opportunity to argue this case in federal court. I almost did it in Rhode Island on Thursday, I was in federal court. Didn't get that chance, though. What he says, it's, oh, it's not reliable. It's anecdotal. I submit to you, that's the it's-not-raining-outside argument. And I wanna create a record here, and I'll explain why later, but the it's-not-raining argument is like this. Suppose it was raining outside, and everybody came in, and we're all wet, and we're out there raining, and you came in, and somebody got up and said, it's raining outside. The applicant's gonna get up there and say, oh, no, we've done computer modeling. And in our computer modeling, we see that it only rains 26 days a year here. And it's already rained 26 days, so our computer modeling proves beyond a shadow of a doubt it's not raining outside. And if somebody says it is, it's anecdotal. The existence or absence of a significant gap in personal wireless service is not voodoo. It's very simple. If you are a customer receiving personal wireless services, and you are able to initiate, maintain, and conclude a telephone call, an email, a text, there is no gap in personal wireless services. Not only would they have to show there's a gap, but they'd have to show there's a significant gap. It is insufficient to simply say, well, we're doing computer modeling, and it's gonna show there's a gap. It doesn't work that way. There is absolutely no reason why they haven't produced one shred of evidence from Verizon to show that contrary to what Verizon has represented to the world on the internet, that it has no gap in coverage. This applicant has provided zero evidence of a gap. None. And they've offered you no reason to tell you why they haven't. Nor have they done any testing in a single building anywhere in the area they're claiming they have this gap. None. So they have no evidence before you. Nor have they provided you any reason why they really can't use alternative sites. Typically, the reason they don't wanna choose alternative sites is money and nothing else. Now, why is it important to discuss alternate sites and gap? It is very important for this reason. In representing the homeowners, I'm gonna ask you to deny this application. But in doing so, I need to be careful. I wanna make sure you deny it for a legally permissible reason, and you do it the right way. It has to be on a written record. In the record, you have to give the reasons for your denial, and you also must cite the evidence you relied upon in arriving at your decision. Because if you don't do that, even if you do it for the right reason, and you make a bad record, I assure you, the applicant would have no problem marching into federal court and getting a federal judge to order you to give the permit, even if it fails to comply with your code. And this application clearly does. So it's important that you understand. You have to deny it for a valid reason. You have to give a written decision. Cite the reasons in your decision, and refer to the evidence that was placed before you during the hearing. If you do all of those things, and you deny the application, it reduces the likelihood that someone might file a lawsuit against the town. And by the way, there's so many times I hear the threats of the lawsuit. Threats of lawsuits by applicants under the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 are hollow. And the reason is, even if you make a mistake and they sue you, they don't get damages and they don't get attorney's fees. So when they try to intimidate you, or they bring in a stenographer who writes stuff down, it's meaningless. It costs virtually nothing to fight one of these things, just so everybody knows. Does anybody have any questions about anything so far?
There's a lot of evidence there that you presented, so I'm sure my attorney, our attorney's gonna want time to look at this and so on and so forth. I mean, and as far as alternate sites, like, we've given alternate sites as McKeel's Corners to raising that.
Yes.
I guess, the issue there is, I guess Homeland Towers does not hold the lease there, right?
No, that's not the issue. The issue is that it doesn't work from an RF standpoint.
Oh, no. Okay, right, I got it. Okay. I didn't mean to direct my question to you, I'm sorry. Homeland Towers doesn't have any part of that.
No. Crown Castle apparently is the lessor there, who, again, is one of Mr. Gorioso's clients. Now...
Sure. Go ahead.
After the last meeting, I took it upon myself, my wife and I, on four separate days, when the leaves were on the trees, and now when the leaves go off the trees, we initiated a call on Route 9 and drove all the way to the Puntum Valley Tower, and were able to maintain that call. And on the way back, we were able to stream a YouTube video the whole way, four times. And it's not like it was an aberration. I was using an iPhone 6 on the Verizon network. Is that proof?
My argument would be that that is direct evidence that there is no gap in coverage. However, federal courts have often sided with wireless companies, saying, well, that's, you know, that's one call, but there's hundreds of thousands of calls. It is important that you have your RF engineer look at the actual evidence that has been submitted by the applicant. Okay? This applicant would love nothing better than for you to either fail to make a determination that there's no gap in coverage, or fail to make a determination that there are better, less intrusive alternative sites, and here's why. Many of the cases I handled, again, I was arguing a case in Rhode Island, the federal court in Rhode Island on Thursday. Because the court, it was a case where a zoning board made the right decision but didn't articulate the reasons for their decision, and they may lose the case. Okay? If you don't decide whether or not there's a gap in coverage, and you don't decide whether or not there are potential less intrusive sites available, and you rule against this applicant, there's a very good chance this applicant will go to federal court and claim that you violated the Telecommunications Act. And here's how. One of the constraints that the Telecommunications Act imposes upon local governments, it says, even if this application would violate your code, you must grant the application if denying the application would be tantamount to prohibiting personal wireless services. For an applicant to establish that denying this application would be tantamount to prohibiting personal wireless services, they have to prove two things. They have to show, one, they suffer from a significant gap in personal wireless services, and number two, that the proposed installation is the least intrusive means of remedying that gap. If you make neither of those fact findings, the federal court's gonna make it for you. They're just gonna assume. Applicants go to win and say, we produced evidence, RF engineers, here's our reports, there was no evidence to rebut that there was a gap in coverage. Nor is there evidence to rebut the evidence we put in that the other site wouldn't work. And if you get an RF engineer to look at it, I guarantee you, he's gonna be able to chew this up and spit it, because it's just, it's nonsense. Okay? There is no direct evidence of a gap. And if you don't establish a gap, if you don't even know where the gap is, how large it is, how would you determine whether or not a potential installation is the least intrusive means of remedying that gap? There's no way of knowing it. And the thing is, they've given you no reason why they're not giving you evidence from Verizon. And the reason probably is, because like Verizon says on its own website, there is no gap. If there was a gap, Verizon might be applicant here. Could you speak to...
I know we haven't had the opportunity. You've submitted voluminous documents, and I haven't had a chance to look at it. Do those documents contain any competent RF evidence speaking to the issue of whether there is or is not an established gap in coverage?
The problem is, it's like proving a negative. Okay? Typically, if you have a gap in service and you test, you will get a finite geographic area that has a gap. And then you can figure out how to remedy that gap. But when there is no gap, when the gap is something that is a specter created by a computer program into which you can add any variables you want to come up with any number you want, it's impossible to say, what is a good alternative location? It's impossible.
So what you're saying is that if, as Vinnie did, going, driving the whole distance where they say that there's a gap, and he found no gap, and we also had Paul Eldridge and Joel Cooper, who did the same thing and found also that there was no gap. So you're saying that that's not good enough evidence?
What they do is, they have to concede that there is no gap in coverage as far as the tests showed. And they say, well, that's outdoor coverage or in-car coverage. That means you can send and receive a phone call if you're outside or in your car. Oh, but it's different in a building. See, our gap is in in-building coverage. And even though there's plenty of signal strength to make a call from inside your car, when that signal passes through the materials of which a building is made, now there's no coverage.
How do we evaluate that?
You could have an engineer go inside a building and measure the level, and get hard evidence of what the actual signal strength is. And they could have done it. Why wouldn't they?
Right.
If you've got all this money invested in this, you can imagine how much money Homeland Towers is spending on this application. If there was a legitimate gap in in-building coverage, why wouldn't they simply walk inside a building and test the signal strength? It costs nothing. Why do you think they did it?
Right. So in order to make a decision, you're saying that we should have an engineer go into the buildings?
Certainly, you're certainly free to do so. The other thing is...
Otherwise, if we deny it, we're not, we haven't proven our case, you're saying?
You should make a determination as to whether or not there's a significant gap in coverage. The federal law, the Telecommunications Act, does not define what is a significant gap in coverage. And courts are loath to do it, but they have. And they say, look, a gap in coverage is when you can't initiate, maintain, or conclude a phone call. And even if there's one spot, a 10-foot spot, that's not a significant gap. It has to be a gap that's truly significant. Significant in geographic area and the number of calls. Several circuit courts have said, you know, a good way to show that is, give us the drop call data. Verizon, with a few keystrokes, could say, look, in the month of November, we had 230,000 drop calls. It's not here. Why not? It's not. The other thing they don't take into account is, they claim, without any evidence from Verizon, you don't have an affidavit, you don't have a statement, you have no records of Verizon. Verizon could have other towers serving this area. They don't know. They have no way of knowing what Verizon has. Verizon could have DOS systems, who knows? Crown Castle has a lot of DOS systems. But they're assuming that the towers that they punched into their figures are the only possible towers that can serve the area. There's no evidence of that. There could be a 500-foot tower three miles away that I don't know about, and they don't know about it either. So their calculation is meaningless.
Also, you know, we have nine cell towers in Phillips Town. We're a town of 9,000 people. That's 1,000 people per cell tower. Isn't that kind of excessive?
Yeah. Look, the reality is, most areas such as this have sufficient cell coverage. So why would they be here? Homeland Towers is the business of making money. Obviously, they think that if they build this tower, somebody's gonna come lease on it. Well, why would they? Answer's simple. Future capacity needs. There's a race that's on right now. Okay? These companies that are in the business of building cell towers, they are building as many towers as they can based upon the understanding that as our need for access data goes up, they're gonna need more capacity, they're gonna need more antennas. And if you're Verizon, and you find out 150-foot towers going up, you'll wanna be there first. You wanna be on the top rung. Okay? Because each carrier needs what's called 10 feet of vertical real estate. So if you've got 150-foot tower, each carrier has to be 10 feet apart. So would you wanna be at 110 feet or 140 feet? You wanna be first. So even though Verizon may not need it now, and they don't, according to their own website, they would go on that tower for future capacity needs. It also doesn't hurt their commercial when you say, hey, can you hear me now? They love all those little red dots. It's even good for stock prices, 'cause they're assets. So even though they don't need it now, there's no reason for them not to put it up for future capacity needs. That is absolutely insufficient as a matter of law to say that's a significant gap in service. Because if Verizon really needed it, Verizon would be your applicant. And you would have Verizon giving you direct evidence that there is a gap, not some gap made up with some computer program.
Let me speak to necessity. I'm trying to figure out if this is actually necessary for the area.
Necessary, it's only necessary if it is necessary to remedy a significant gap in personal wireless services. That's it. But by the way, necessary for one carrier is different than other carriers. Okay? Make no mistake, cell towers are a necessary evil. They're no less necessary than sewage treatment plants. What you wanna be against is the irresponsible placement of wireless facilities, or unnecessary redundancy. Cell towers aren't like traditional utility structures, because traditional utility structures, you have one infrastructure. You have one set of poles for your power lines, one set of pipes for your water and your sewer collection. Okay? Cell towers are different, because under the Telecommunications Act, every carrier has the right for its own coverage. What that means is, if Verizon comes in and covers the area, and builds towers, and has the whole area covered, you can't stop AT&amp;T from coming in and saying, we want coverage too, and putting up more towers. You can ask them to co-locate, and to a certain extent, you can require that, but just because one company has saturated coverage, doesn't affect the others. That's the way the law works. But there's a far cry between saying, you know, everybody gets their own spots, and once they're saturated, we can just say we have a gap based upon in-building coverage despite the fact that we haven't provided any direct evidence whatsoever.
You mentioned alternative sites. Would we be required to show that an alternative site is actually...
There is no requirement that you do so. However, if you don't, and you don't rule on their argument that this is a significant gap and it's necessary, they'll march into court and say, look, denying this application was tantamount to prohibiting personal wireless services because we offered unrebutted evidence that this was the only location that could remedy the gap, and that we had a significant gap. So you need to put in evidence on the other side, make a decision based upon the evidence, and cite the evidence you relied upon in your decision. If you do, you move very close towards making a bulletproof decision within which carriers, applicants, don't sue because they know they can't win.
Can you provide us with a little more clarity? Who's deciding? Who's the arbiter of the significant gap in coverage?
Excellent question. Here's the way it works. The federal statute doesn't define a significant gap in coverage. And for years, the courts wouldn't define it. They said it's a fact-by-fact case analysis, okay? And the biggest problem for years was that local boards didn't make that determination. And so, generally speaking, when you go to federal court, because that's, if, if they claim you violate Telecommunications Act, that's where they go. They go to federal court. Federal judges hate zoning cases. They loathe them. They don't want to be Boards of Zoning Appeals, that they view beneath them, and there probably is, justifiably. So they don't want to hear it. And so, when boards make factual determinations, and it looks like there's a factual basis for it, they are loath to reverse or substitute their judgment for those decisions. That's why if you get evidence from RF engineer, and it's enough to support a reasonable line to make the decision that you do, it is unlikely that, not only that you'd lose in a lawsuit, but it makes it unlikely you get sued in the first place.
We had asked at one point whether there was another spot off of Vineyard on this property owner that is leasing this property to Homeland Towers, if there was another spot that was maybe away from the residents on the opposite side there. But that was not ever brought forward. But would that be something that your clients would be still interested in, is maybe moving the tower on the other side or, you know, away from-
Let me speak to that. I asked that question a few months ago on that. And we have a letter from the owner of the property who's leasing it, Mr. McFadden. I'll read his letter. This letter is dated, it's August 22nd. This letter is at the request of Vincent Xavier, Homeland Towers, as to advise you that I am not willing to lease any other location on my Vineyard Road property for the purpose of erecting a cell tower. I have carefully considered other locations on my property, and I've concluded that the location as currently specified is the only one that is acceptable. Now, of course, as we discussed, there's more acceptable locations to the board, which would be closer down to Route 9, which is more of a commercial area, but the-
Does that inspire a requirement to come up with an alternative?
I'd have to look at it, to be honest with you.
Right, but what, he's saying, what he's basically saying is that that's the only thing, you know? Of course, he also owns a home on top, you know, that he doesn't want it up there. But I could, you know, I would like to see it placed down by the commercial area, which would be more accessible. But he, he's stopping us from doing it, I guess, or from even them from considering it.
Look, the important mindset, you have to understand what drives location. And it's not coverage. It's just not, okay? What drives location, preferred location, is money. And, and the way it works is this. To find the most preferable locations, understanding that hundreds of thousands of these things go up, what are you looking for? Well, first of all, you need access, okay? You have to have an access road for someone to get to the tower when it's built so they can do maintenance. You also need power, and you need connectivity. So you need utility poles that you can reach. Also, you want cheap rent. So if you've got one person who's silly enough to rent their spot for $500 a month, and another guy wants $3,000, it's only $200, $500 a month, but if you have 100,000 towers, that's quite a few bucks. And I can tell you, in town after town, not just across the state of New York, but across the entire United States, when they have the ability to cite a tower out in the wilderness, out in the woods outside of town, or they have a chance to lease one behind a gas station right in the center of town, they always go to the gas station. Why? If you go in the woods, you've got to cut down trees, you've got to clear way, you've got to put in a gravel access road, you've got to put up poles, you've got to run wires, all that costs money. And so what they do is, they pick the cheapest location possible. And then, when boards come up and say, look, what about these alternatives? They say, oh, that's no good. Why not? My favorite line of all. We reviewed that, and it doesn't meet our coverage objectives. But what does that mean? It doesn't mean it won't give you coverage. It doesn't mean they're coverage objectives. Their coverage objectives are, get the tower up as cheap as we possibly can. That's what it's all about. That's the truth. So if you look at other locations in town, and you think they're suitable alternative locations, then you want to consider them. Take a long, hard look, and you'll, if you look at this location, you'll know why they're picking it.
Aesthetics, the aesthetics of these towers, I know they spoke about making it look like a tree. It doesn't look like a tree to me, but, I mean, you know, is there any other aesthetics that could-
Well, I give them credit, they've come a long way from the ugly, ugly monopines, which are like the ugliest fake Christmas trees you've ever seen in your life. And I don't know of any 40-foot Christmas trees I've seen around, but the thing about aesthetics is this. First and foremost, as you may or may not be aware, we've submitted quite a few letters from homeowners where they detail the adverse aesthetic impact each of their homes will sustain as a result of this facility if it's built. It is critical to understand, a federal court, in fact, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Second Circuit has ruled, not only that these letters are admissible, but they are competent evidence which must be considered by the board. And the reason the federal judge gave, they said, it is the homeowners themselves who are in the absolute best position to understand the nature of the adverse aesthetic impact that they're going to suffer as a result of this facility. Now, I saw those images up on that screen there, and I have to tell you, the Jordans residence is going to be slammed. I mean, their, their property value is going to go through the toilet. And for them to say, oh, this accurately shows, it's wonderful, no, no. They, it's more likely than not, they, they found the place on the property, if they in fact went to his home, they were probably found the one place on his property where you could block as much as you possibly can from it. And I invite the board, go there yourself, take a look, draw your own conclusions. Because according to Mr. Jordan, he says, you know, God help me, if I sit on my back porch, and I try to entertain, on my deck, and entertain family and friends at a barbecue, this thing is literally going to be looming over us. That is precisely the type of evidence that a federal court says you should and must consider that. I mean, aesthetics is a big deal. Let's face it, we spend billions of dollars at Home Depot. Why? Aesthetics.
I know 60 Round Hill Road is above the proposed location for the cell tower. So in addition to the actual cell tower, they're going to see the 4,300-foot compound that they are using, you know? So it's not just the cell tower, it's, it's this industrial compound that they-
It's just submission after submission, a balloon test. Really? A balloon test? Okay, where do you want to start with a balloon test? 140-foot balloon test, great. They put on a little tiny string. Now, has ever seen, has anybody ever seen a balloon on a string go perfectly up a line? You think it's 140-foot high when they look at it? Now, by the way, that little string is a lot different than a cell tower with a five-foot base, okay? It is a far more intruding structure, okay? You have all these antennas sticking out, you've got a five-foot base, that's not a string and a balloon. It's not, it's not even close. Doesn't even come close to showing you what it's actually going to look like.
Any other questions for any of the board members?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. You can ask whatever you want.
How many people here are in the Vinland area and, or directly in the area around Vinland? Raise your hands, please. And how many of you have cell phones? And how many of you can make a phone call from within your house? Is there anyone that can't make a phone call from within their house? Looks like everybody can make a phone call from within their house.
I think you should get an RF engineer to do testing. And when you test, you should test different days, different times of day, because Mr. Godiosa is already ready to go into federal court and say, they're only relying on anecdotal evidence. Use an expert. Use an expert. Now, as far as compliance with the code, not even close. Not even close. Your code requirement requires a setback equal, equal to the height of the tower. What does that mean? If it's a 140-foot tower, the setback has to be 140 feet from all sides. They have what you call the postage stamp problem. And they play this game constantly. I'm not talking about this applicant. I'm talking about applicants in general, okay? The facility they leased, the space, the compound, I think it's what, 68 feet at its widest point? 68 feet. Okay. If you put a five-foot base tower in the center, that leaves 63 feet. The maximum setback they can have from the size of the parcel they leased then is 23 feet. It's one-sixth of your minimum setback requirement. What they do is, they say, well, the setback is the distance from the base of the tower to the landlord's property line. That's not the proper measurement. And the reason is, this applicant has no power to exclude anyone from any area outside of the property they leased or their compound. So it cannot be calculated based upon the setback between the base of the tower and the landlord's property line. Why is that relevant? Well, why do you have setbacks? When it comes to cell towers, there are three dangers associated with cell towers. And I'm not talking about RF radiation, not even going to go there, okay? First one is icefall. Icefall. Let's say you have a 150-foot tower. You have ice up here in the winter. Forms up on the, on the top, okay? When it starts to thaw, the ice lets loose and comes down. From a 150-foot tower, a chunk of ice, by the time it reaches six foot in height off the ground, it's traveling 167 miles an hour. If anybody's under it, they're dead. And you guys have a lot of wind, so somebody could be 20 feet, 50 feet outside that compound, and that ice comes down, done. Structural failures, these things fail all the time. Fires. Any doubt, go on to Google, do a search for "cell tower burns to the ground," watch them going up in flames. These things are built like smart cars. They're not built to be as safe as possible, they're built to be as cheap as possible. And failures occur all the time. Debris fall. Men go up on there and work on things. They work on these towers. And I could show you a picture from a house in Wisconsin, a guy's working, drops a hammer, goes through the roof of the house, right through. How do you protect the public? You make sure the fall zone is enough so that any of these things happen, nobody is in the fall zone area. And how do you do that? Is that they make the area they, from which they can preclude others as large as the setback requirement, and you are protecting the public and anybody else, kids walking through there, anybody. They have not met the setback requirement. Even more importantly, they haven't told you why. There's nothing stopping them from leasing a 300 by 300-foot parcel. Yes.
That setback would be fenced, so the fence would, the compound would get bigger.
At a minimum, they have to, they have to have a right to exclude others from that area. They don't have that right. They have no power to control any area of that property outside of that fenced-in compound, because that's all they leased. That means anybody can walk there, and anybody can be hit by a piece of ice, falling tower, whatever.
I'm just saying, by the description that you just gave, you were saying that we, they should have the fenced area, that whole shadowed area of the 140-foot, right?
Do something to make sure nobody's in that dangerous zone, okay? Now, what about the height? Well, it was 180, we're going to go to 140. Really? Are you sure it's going to be 140? See, in 2012, then-President Barack Obama did something really, really cute. He signed into law something called the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, which sounds really good, right? Tax relief, job creation, I like that. There's a little provision in there for cell towers. And what that provision says is, once a cell tower is built, its owner can increase the height of that tower without any approval from the local zoning boards, as long as the increase in height of the tower doesn't substantially increase the overall height of the facility. What does that mean? It doesn't really define it. So the FCC comes along and basically says, yeah, 140-foot tower, they can go up another 25, 30 feet. So, if you approve 140-foot tower, and you look at those balloon tests, 140-foot tower, after it's built, there is absolutely nothing to stop them from going back up to 165. You can't stop them at that point. How do you know if they're going to do it? There's two ways you can try. The first thing is, look at the base of the tower. When they went to build a 180-foot tower, there's an engineering design, and it's got a certain width. Look and see if they narrowed the width. I'm willing to bet you they haven't. The other thing you can do is ask them if they'll agree. Covenant. If, for whatever reason, despite this marvelous presentation from me, you're going to grant this, okay? Suppose you're going to grant it. There's nothing to stop you from asking them if they would stipulate to a covenant to run with the land that the tower could never be built to higher than 140. And if they say no, you can decide why they're saying no.
Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
I just have a question about the letter that you wrote, Mr., you read, Mr. D., from the property owner.
Yes.
And my name's Eric Land, I'm on the Town Conservation Board. And the potential for adjusting the tower location on the Vineyard Road property, there are, as we all know, wetlands which are regulated by the town at the proposed location. In general practice, the Conservation Board, when we're presented with an application, requests alternative locations that don't impact town-regulated areas. The parcel, the Vineyard Road parcel is how many acres?
64 acres.
64? So, given the letter you-
Starting from Route 9 and going up the hill, like, would be east, yeah, would be going up north.
Given the letter that you, you read from the property owner, and our general practices for considering a wetlands application and asking for alternative locations that don't impact wetlands, what is the Conservation Board's authority to do that at this point, considering the wishes of the landowner and the limitations of, you know, of citing and all of that?
I think what he's saying, basically, there's two permits they need, not permits, but it's two approvals. They need a wetlands permit, because in this particular area that Mr. McFadden has shows, I guess he picked out, there's a wetlands, a couple ponds, yeah, they have to go through. There's no other wetlands, it's two ponds, I believe, it's two-
No, we're not going through the ponds. In fact, we're not, we're not even impacting the wetlands. We're going through a regulated, we're going through a regulated buffer area, so we're not going through the ponds.
I understand that.
They were retention ponds. We're going through an area of the wetland buffer to bring in the access to access equity.
Understood.
Okay. What I'm trying to say is that, are there other pieces of the 64 acres that doesn't have any retention ponds? The answer is yes.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, there's, I understand, I've been to the site, they are retention ponds, but the town, whether or not, you know, it's not a pristine, perfect wetland, but the wetland and the 100-foot buffer is regulated by the town. That's just in the town code.
Well, that's up for the Conservation Board to decide.
But I guess my question is to the larger group is, as a general practice, if there is an alternative site to the proposal that doesn't impact wetlands, irregardless of their, you know, current condition, what is our, what is our authority to request an alternative site at the Vineyard Road property that doesn't impact regulated areas, in this case, wetlands and buffers from, from the town?
I think that would be a question our attorney, are you, I think you have, do you have your own attorney in the board? Is it a different board? I don't know. No, I guess, maybe you could find that answer out, I guess, or?
Well, I mean, the applicant has to demonstrate that a request was made and was denied for an alternate site. They have to demonstrate efforts were made for alternate sites. Now, they might not have control over the approval, but they still have to make that demonstration.
I think that demonstration was on this letter. I think they, that, the request to Vincent Xavier, so I think they did ask, what I gathered by this letter, did ask him, and he said, no, it only has to be there. That doesn't mean that-
The short answer is, I mean, the board can't order-
Yeah.
-an owner of property to say, make this available to the applicant.
Right, right.
The applicant can make that request-
Right.
-and the information has to be provided to the board, but we obviously don't have the power to order an owner to do something in particular.
The only part we have is not- You know, the town setback, isn't that a-
Well, that's certainly a lawful basis to deny the application, especially since there's no reason why they can't meet the setbacks. They've offered you evidence of that. However, you have to be cautious, again. If you deny the application, you have to make sure you address this alleged gap and alleged allegation of no alternative sites. And of equal import, because of the issue that counsel just raised, when they claim that they've made efforts to consider alternative sites, make sure they've made genuine efforts. Because it's so easy to say, we made an effort. Oh, we sent a registered letter to Joe Smith, and we offered to lease the site, but he told us he didn't want to. They don't tell you, they offered him $10 a month, okay? Or they sent a registered letter to an address for him in Florida that he hasn't lived at in 10 years. I've seen this happen.
If, okay, from, maybe, I just want to make sure I understood what you said. If, if they, you're saying, I think you said that the amount of land that they leased doesn't allow them enough room to have an adequate setback to, that meets our requirement, right?
That's, that's correct.
So, so they'd have to have a larger plot of land to-
They have to be able to, to guarantee the setback that is required under your code, which would be the height of the tower on all sides. They would have to have the ability to exclude others from that area. Otherwise, the setback is meaningless. What's the point of a setback? It, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't do anything.
Okay.
So, they can't do it because they have no such power. They have no power to control anything except what's inside of that fenced-in compound.
Right. So if the landlord is not willing to give them additional land, then they can't-
I would imagine that the terms of their lease, and I've seen probably hundreds of them, the lease is typically a one-sided lease, where it gives them all kinds of power, and the landlord can't back out of it. If they need reasonable extensions, or reasonable lists, or reasonable, they can usually get it, usually.
But they haven't, but they haven't asked for enough land to meet the town setbacks.
No, absolutely not.
So, okay, I mean, I would think that would be something that wouldn't be acceptable.
Um, it's certainly a perfectly valid legal grounds upon which to deny the application. But for argument's sake, suppose you render a decision and say, "We deny the application because it doesn't meet setbacks." They'll march into federal court a day later. Because you didn't address their allegation of a significant gap in service and allegation of no alternative sites. So, you must address that. They would prefer you don't, because then they win by default.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Any other question?
I'm wondering, I, I might have missed it in the stacks of paper that we received, but did we get a copy of the lease between Homeland Towers and Mr. Fadden?
No, they wouldn't provide that.
Is there a reason why you wouldn't?
It's not relevant, it's not required under the code. And just to be clear, we meet the setback requirements. The code requires the tower be set back from the property line and from various roads and various residential districts. It's not just the height of the tower, it's more complicated than that. There is nothing in-
No, you had to go, Mr. Guardioso, I'm sorry, just let it give the-
There is nothing in the code that says that the setback is from the compound area. We meet the setbacks, the, um, the, the code is clear. Uh, if the board feels we don't meet the setbacks and, and wishes to deny the application on that basis, you know, then that would be the board's purview to do this evening. We would ask you to take care of that. As far as the lease agreement, no, the lease agreement's not relevant to this application. We did provide a letter of authorization from the property owner, which is part of the record, and that's all that's required. Thank you.
Even, even though that would identify the, you know, the dimensions of what you're leasing?
Well, the dimensions are on the plan of what the compound is, including the fenced area.
That's the extent of what you're leasing, that compound? Or is there additional space outside the compound?
The compound includes our access and our utilities in the lease.
Okay.
I actually disagree with Mr. Guardioso. I think-
The lease is necessary, and the reason it's necessary is to show standing. Because if they didn't have a lease, then Mr. Guardioso's client would have no greater right to be in this property than I would. You need a valid lease. And so, I would submit to you that the board should require a valid lease to ensure this is an exercise in futility.
I agree, I think we need a lease.
I have a question about the shot clock. The, the shot clock is supposedly up on January 5th, and there seems to be a lot of unresolved, um, stuff.
Okay.
So, um-
Okay, the shot clock, she's, she's talking to, talking with regard, respect to a specific section of the code that requires zoning authorities to make decisions within a reasonable time. And since, of course, the law didn't say what a reasonable time was, along came the FCC to the aid of the wireless industry and said, "We're gonna set the standards." And the standards are, a local board must make a decision on a co-location within ninety days and on a new location within a hundred and fifty days from completion of the application. Now, it can be told in a number of ways. If the application is rejected as incomplete, that tolls the shot clock until the applicant submits a complete application. If it's then deemed incomplete again, I think you can reject it, but I think you only have ten days to do so. Um, if not, shot clock runs, and the only way you can get it to be extended is by stipulation of the applicant. Many boards I've heard say, "Listen, we don't have enough information, and if you want us to make a decision with insufficient information, we can do so. Or you can give us more time, extend the shot clock, and give us the information we need." If the board thinks they need further proof from this applicant that there are no feasible alternative locations, or even better yet, give us direct evidence that there's actually a gap, other than this computer modeling nonsense. You can do that.
And we can, if, if we don't have evidence, adequate evidence, um, that there's a gap. I mean, they've provided, um, stuff from PierCon-
Yep.
-which is a computer modeling, uh, on a gap, but they haven't provided any actual in-person, um-
No direct evidence, none. It's all speculative.
So-
And there, at this juncture, their position would be, it's unrebutted. We've submitted professional, expert evidence, and all they got was anecdotal evidence from members of the audience. So, if you were to get an RF engineer to go in and test the actual signal strength, you would now have evidence to rebut their claims. Direct, professional evidence.
Okay.
But, you're right, the shot clock, I believe, runs January 5th.
Right.
And if you don't make a decision, you lose by default.
Right, right. So, we can't, uh, we can't delay our decision until after January 5th?
But if you got an engineer, I would have him test inside the buildings on different days, different times of day, different conditions, rain outside, leave, whatever. And that will give you direct evidence of whether or not this gap that they claim exists actually exist. And I would be shocked if any engineer said it did.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any more? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the- Next on the call, RF engineer, Mr. McKee's.
Wow, I'm, I don't know how I'm gonna follow that. Quite a performance.
I have your report here, and I read it, and I've got a couple, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Basically, I asked you to look at McKeel's Corners-
Yes.
-and what, where the gap is. You're saying that the, the corners, Mr., McKeel's Corners, McKeel's Corner site leaves a gap along Route 9 north of 301. Is that a large gap? I mean, what are we talking about?
All right.
Do you have any, could you give me an idea?
Can I go into a little more detail?
You can.
Do I have the time to do that? All right. Uh, I want to be very careful what I say tonight, because we've got a number of attorneys who are apparently also engineers. And I, I don't want to affront them by saying something that we can't sit down together and mutually solve a set of equations to prove either right or wrong. So, I'm gonna be very precise, and if I have to read some of my answers, please allow me to do that, because I don't want anybody to misinterpret what I'm going to say. And this is not to say that I favor one side or the other, okay? What you asked me to do originally was to look at the viability of a number of alternative sites. It was the Lane Gate Road property, which I discussed last month, and I'm not gonna repeat that again tonight in the interest of time to allow other people to speak. In addition, at last month's meeting, you asked me to look at the McKeel's Corner site. And the reason for that was that at last month's meeting, I indicated that there was, uh, a lot of info, information with regard to the performance of the McKeel's Corner site that was missing, and I didn't want to offer an opinion without getting some additional information with regard to that location. Subsequent to that meeting, the applicant provided an additional RF report. I think it was dated the next day, November 13th. They also issued yet another report, uh, November 30th, uh, I think in response to a report I provided as a result of the information from the November 13th report. So, I'd like to go through some of that information, because as much as Mr. Guardioso made a great effort, I fear that he misquoted me, and I want to correct the record, okay? The McKeel's Corner site that we were looking at was for a situation where the antenna height would be elevated to a hundred and ninety feet. That's ninety feet above the existing antenna sites right now, not two hundred and ten feet. I didn't even consider two hundred and ten feet, because I didn't want to get into any of the issues associated with the FAA. Now, at last week, month's meeting, the applicant indicated that they would reduce the antenna height and tower height at the Vineyard Road, Vineyard Road site to a hundred and forty feet. Now, there are no plots that show predictions of coverage at a hundred and forty feet. The closest thing are plots at a hundred and fifty feet. So, uh, what I looked at were the plots provided by the applicant at a hundred and fifty feet relative to the performance at McKeel's Corner. One of the other reasons that, uh, I looked at that was that, uh, there was just no way to pick any other height. Now, the difference of ten feet is not going to be significant. Uh, if anything, it would require the performance of the McKeel's Corner site to be even better in order to, uh, offset that additional ten feet that was used in the plots. I primarily focused on the coverage at seven hundred megahertz, and we can get into a whole discussion about where voice traffic is carried and what LTE does and what it doesn't, and about 2G and 3G, but I don't think we have enough time tonight to get into all of that. Let's just say for the moment, because the plots that were provided were at seven hundred megahertz and twenty-one hundred megahertz, I focused on the seven hundred megahertz plots. The reason is twofold. One is that propagation at twenty-one hundred megahertz, I don't care where you are, is sketchy. Uh, maybe in a flat, open field, you can get twenty-one hundred megahertz to propagate effectively and provide some coverage and some capacity. But in the challenging area here in Phillips Town, that's not gonna happen. And I think if you look at the plots at twenty-one hundred provided by the applicant, they seem to accept that as well. So, let's just focus at seven hundred megahertz. One of the other reasons is, they didn't provide any additional plots at twenty-one hundred megahertz for the reduced tower height on Vineyard Road. So, there was nothing really to compare with at twenty-one hundred. So, again, let's go back to seven hundred megahertz. If you raise the antennas at McKeel's Corner and you look at what's referred to as the in-building, uh, coverage, uh, at seven hundred megahertz, you're left with approximately a quarter-mile area of reduced coverage along Route 9 north of Route 301. Uh, but it does provide more coverage on Route 301 west of Route 9 than the Vineyard Road site would provide at a hundred and fifty feet. The sort of impact of the gap on Route 9 is, is just difficult to determine, because it requires far too much speculation about assumptions that can't be verified, and we're talking very small numbers. So, consequently, I, I'm just not in a position to claim the significance of the gap or, or the reduced coverage on Route 9 versus any reduced coverage on Route 301. Uh, I just don't want to speculate in that respect. So, if you look at the conclusion with regard to McKeel's Corners, and I'm gonna read this so that nobody, uh, misquotes me, raising the antenna heights at McKeel's Corners to a hundred and ninety feet and adjusting the antenna orientations, which was done in the subsequent PierCon report, uh, would provide reliable in-building coverage at seven hundred megahertz along, uh, Route 301 west of Route 9. However, an area of less than reliable coverage would, would remain along Route 9 north of Route 301. Conversely, the proposed tower at 50 Vineyard Road would provide reliable in-building, uh, service at seven hundred megahertz along Route 9, but leave an even larger portion of Route 301 without reliable service, okay? Yes, there would be, there would be. Uh, I don't like to use the term gap, because-
Lack of service.
Uh, no, it's not lack of service. It is service of reduced reliability.
Reduced reliability, that's a good one.
Right, there is, as was said, there is no definition of what a significant gap is, okay?
Reduced liability, I guess.
Mr. McKee, did you say that on Route 9, the area where there was a, a gap, was a quarter of a mile?
What I said was, the area on Route 9 that would be left with less than reliable service-
Right, right.
-is approximately a quarter of a mile in length, about thirteen hundred and fifty feet to the best that I can measure with a, with a ruler on the eight and a half by eleven plots.
And that's if we, that's for the McKeel's Corners?
Yes, yes, yes. Okay? Now, if the Nelsonville Tower or a tower in that area is constructed, the McKeel's Corner site with a hundred and ninety-foot antenna height is, wait a minute, uh, excuse me, if the Nelsonville Tower is not constructed, then the McKeel's Corner site with a hundred and ninety-foot antenna is the better choice based on offered coverage, okay?
Basically, what you're saying, if McKeel's Corners could be raised to a hundred and ninety feet, we wouldn't need the tower at Vineyard Road?
Yes.
Okay.
The coverage would be better. I'm not saying you wouldn't, I'm just saying the coverage would be better.
Coverage would be better than Vineyard Road?
Yes.
Okay.
However, however-
Please.
Well, you're putting words in his mouth.
I'm not putting his word in his mouth. I told you not to interrupt. I told you not to interrupt, okay?
However, let me continue, let me continue. However, if a Nelsonville-
Give me your time, your time.
If a Nelsonville cell site is erected, the proposed tower on Vineyard Road would be a better choice, okay? So, it's-
But we have no, unfortunately, we don't have any, you know, anything to do with that.
I understand that.
It's Nelsonville's. But I appreciate, uh, your conclusions.
If you could also speak to the issue of, the threshold issue of your analysis of whether the applicant has demonstrated, with what there is now, uh, a, a gap or a significant gap, uh, in service or coverage? If you can please speak to that.
Okay, uh, I apologize, because this is going to get a little detailed. And, uh, I do have a couple of degrees in engineering, so, uh, I think I have a reasonable understanding, after thirty-three years in the business, of how this works. I do not have a degree in the law, so I'm not gonna comment on the law, all right? There is no FCC requirement for the performance of any common carrier cellular network. There are no numerical values that the FCC, uh, tells a service provider that they have to meet, all right? In addition, there are no international standards bodies, whether it's the ITU or Etsy or 3GPP or ANSI or any of them, that specify any numerical values for wireless network performance. So, what, what are those numbers? Well, what's happened is that, uh, after years and years of, uh, service and due to competitive pressures, the wireless industry has established reliability metrics for their service. It's based on measuring millions and millions of phone calls to establish statistically significant numbers. Uh, it's based on the air interface technology that they're using, whether it's 2G or 3G or 4G or even 5G, it doesn't matter. In general, and I don't say this specifically for Verizon, because I do not have recent experience with Verizon, but I have experience from some years ago, most of the service providers target about a ninety-nine, a ninety-eight percent reliability for their wireless network. That means that of the millions of calls that are placed, two percent of those calls will be unsuccessful, okay? So, you can understand, making eight or ten phone calls or driving on a road and saying that you can hold up a call is not statistically significant, all right? That doesn't prove anything. You need to have a value that you can rely on, a mean and a standard distribution, all right? So, if you ask me, is there a gap on Route 9? And what's the definition of that gap, if I can use that term? What it means is, if, if you made millions of phone calls in that area, uh, the reliability of the network would be less than ninety-eight percent. In other words, it would be greater than two percent unsuccessful calls, okay? What the service providers and what RF engineering and, and electrical engineering, communication theory clearly says, that the reliability of the network performance is a function of the signal strength. You can correlate network performance with received signal strength. In this case, because it's LTE, it's called reference signal receive power. When it was 2G and 3G, it was just RSSI. But the service providers have been able to determine, in order to operate their network at an acceptable quality level, and let's assume it's a, a less than two percent failure rate, uh, they need a certain received signal strength. Verizon is claiming that they need minus one oh five dBm for, uh, reliable in-vehicle performance. That means that of the millions of calls that would be made from traffic in automobiles and trucks and so forth, less than two percent of them would fail. They've also said that for in-building, uh, performance to meet the quality objective, and, and I don't care if it's Sprint or AT&amp;T or Verizon, they all do the same thing, they need minus ninety-five dBm in this area. Now, these numbers are not cast in concrete, because I know from other Verizon cases, they have used other numbers in different locations. These numbers in Phillips Town, to Verizon's detriment, are low numbers, meaning they set the bar such that, uh, they, uh, would make, uh, make it harder for themselves to have reliable service. For example, if they specified a minus a hundred and a minus ninety instead of minus one oh five and minus ninety-five, uh, they could be even more confident that they have a more reliable network, but they didn't. They used what I consider reasonable numbers here, all right?
I've heard a lot about in-house calls and people in the areas. How do you, how do you test that?
All right. Let's talk about cell phones and, and how they perform for a moment. These numbers, the minus one oh five and the minus ninety-five, are not distinct from each other. And the reason for that is that, when you take a cell phone and you go into a vehicle, that vehicle, uh, provides some additional path loss. Typically, the industry uses six dB as the number. Now, it could be more, it could be less. If you go into a panel van with no windows, the number will be higher. If you drive in a convertible with a top-down, obviously, the number will be lower. But let's use the six dB number and the minus one oh five number that Verizon is suggesting. What that says is, that minus one oh five number is an on-street measurement. It means that if I have a calibrated receiver, that I could stand in the middle of Route 301 and Route 9 and measure minus one oh five dBm. If I got into a vehicle with a six dB additional path loss, that minus one oh five dBm signal would drop to minus one eleven. What Verizon is saying is that at minus one eleven, the gamut of cell phones out there with their differences in performance would allow them to achieve their network reliability objective of two percent or one point eight percent, or whatever their target is, okay? Now, I take the same cell phone and I go into a building. Now, Verizon has set a target of minus ninety-five. Minus ninety-five is an on-street measurement. So, if I stand in front of my, uh, front door, if I happen to live on Route 9, and I measure minus ninety-five, and I go into the building, I'm gonna experience some additional path loss. Typically, the industry uses fifteen to twenty dB of path loss, depending on whether it's a stick building or a concrete or steel building. So, if you take fifteen dB as a, uh, the low end, and I have minus ninety-five dB on the street, and I add fifteen dB to that, I come out with minus a hundred and ten. Now, it's not coincidence that minus a hundred and ten and minus a hundred and eleven that we had when, when in the vehicle are so close to each other. The reason is because the cell phone doesn't change its sensitivity. It needs the same signal. So, that's why there are two different numbers. Now, is every building fifteen dB of path loss? No, I absolutely agree with that. Is every building twenty dB of path loss? No. In fact, if you go into a steel and, uh, concrete building in New York City, and you go into the core of that building, you will probably experience significant path loss, in which case you have zero service, not just impeded service, but zero service. So, if you ask me to go into a building and make a measurement, that doesn't prove anything, because I would have to go into every building in the area that's being considered, and I would have to make thousands and thousands of measurements. And here's the reason. Let's say I make ten phone calls, and one of them fails. I'm already at a ten percent failure rate. If I, if two of them fail, I got a twenty percent failure rate. I could never use those statistics to be, uh, to prove viability of the network. I'd have to make a hu, at least a hundred calls, and if one failed, I'd have a one percent failure rate. If two failed, I'd have a two percent failure rate. But I don't have- But I don't have a lot of resolution with just 100 calls. I'd have to make 1,000 calls. That way, at least I get a 10th of a percent resolution. All right? So going around and driving and making measurements with a cellphone is not statistically significant. The second item is, these cellphones are not all identical, just like any mass-produced product is variation from unit to unit. And I think it's laudable that the homeowners have taken the effort to go and make the measurements. But they really have to understand that the measurements are not significant enough to prove their case. Every cellphone that gets manufactured has a tolerance associated, especially with its reference signal receive power accuracy. The original or early versions of the 3GPP, which stands for Third Generation Partnership Program, which was the international standards body chartered with putting together the 4G standard, originally said that the accuracy of a reference signal receive power measurement from a cellphone only had to be plus or minus 6 dB. So if I take a cellphone from Apple, an iPhone, and I go and make a measurement, I could be in error by 6 dB too high or 6 dB too low. Now, somebody finally woke up and said, whoa, wait a minute, that's way too big a number. We have to tighten that number up. And I went and I checked yesterday to see what the current spec says. For every network element in a wireless network, whether it's user equipment or base station equipment or gateways that are further up the line, there is what's called a compliance test requirement. This is information that the standards bodies put together and says, if you want to build this equipment, your equipment has to be compliant with this specification. For the 4G technology, LTE, version 13 of the standard, which was the most recent one I could find, I'm sure there is yet a more recent one than that, simply says TBD for the accuracy of the reference signal receive power measurement from a cellphone. And because they realized that 6 dB was too big, but they didn't know really what they should make it yet. Now, whether there's a number there now, I don't know, but I'm reasonably certain it is not zero, which says that every cellphone that you take out and you measure, you have got to calibrate first. That's why typically, when this is done professionally, it's done with professional equipment. And the equipment is very expensive, and it's calibrated and guaranteed to an accuracy of plus or minus 1 dB. There are a number of companies that make the equipment, JDS Uniphase, which is now Viavi. There's a number of companies that make this equipment. And the way the equipment works, if you're going to make actual measurements, is it makes lots of measurements, and it comes up with a statistical mean for what that value is. Not one measurement, not two measurements, but it comes up with a statistically significant number. That's the problem with going out and making a measurement with a cellphone. Now, I don't disagree that if you go make actual drive test measurements, if they are statistically significant with a calibrated receiver, that they are always better than predicted plots. I don't disagree with that. The problem is that that's not what we have in this case. Okay? And the truth is that I read your memorandum you passed out tonight from your expert, and he doesn't say that your numbers are representative. He says the methodology of making field test measurements is a viable one. And I don't disagree with that. But they've got to be calibrated and statistically significant. Okay? So at this point, you know, I can't comment on the data that's been presented with regard to whether or not there is a significant gap because I don't know what significant means in this case. I can only comment whether or not, according to the material that I've seen, is there something that is less than Verizon's requirement? That's all.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Can I just ask you one thing? You said something interesting before.
You said that if Nelsonville Tower was built, it would be a better choice. Is that based on coverage or is that based on nodes in the network?
Okay. What I said was that if the Nelsonville Tower is built, or a tower in the Nelsonville area, which would presumably be built to cover, uh, coverage issues along Route 301 that's further west, then the remaining areas of degraded coverage from the Vineyard Road site would be picked up by that Nelsonville Tower. And since the Vineyard Road site does cover Route 9 north of Route 301, you would have Route 9 covered and you would have Route 301 west covered by the Nelsonville Tower.
You could virtually say that if the Nelsonville Tower is not constructed, McKeel's Corner site with the 100-foot tower is the better choice.
Yes. And I want to make it very clear because Mr. Guardioso made a significant misstatement. His own, his own RF engineer, and I think it was the November 30th issue of the Piercon report, on page six agrees with me and says so in that, I think it's the second paragraph on page six of the November 30th report. In terms of providing additional coverage, that the Nelsonville site, it would be better exclusive of, uh, excuse me, the McKeel's Corner site would be better exclusive of the Nelsonville site.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's clearly in the report. Page six, second paragraph.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Guardioso, can I ask you a question? Thank you.
Yeah, but can I also just follow up with one question from Mr. Menkes? Mr. Menkes, but that is just if there's no site in Nelsonville, is what his reference was?
Yes. I don't disagree with that.
Okay. Just want to make that clear.
I don't disagree with that.
You can see we're starting to get a lot of information in here tonight and like that that we haven't got before. I know we're talking about shot clock. Now, where do you stand with the shot clock date? Shot clock date is what, January 5th?
Correct.
Okay. Are you open to us continuing public hearing the next, January 8th? Or would you require us to have an answer by that time?
Well, I'd like to hear how the rest of the meeting goes and provide our comments back on some of the comments that were already made.
Okay. Thank you. Fair enough. Now...
Can I respond to one thing that...
Yeah, sure.
I never argue with engineers. My brother's an engineer and he's much smarter than I am. But I do want to address one issue because the engineer talked about the fact that engineering matters, engineering statistics, things of that nature, and what the carriers strive for. 98%. That's great. But that's not the law. That's not what the law requires. And what I'd like you to do just for a moment is just read to you what a federal judge ruled is a coverage, is a gap. And significantly, the name of the case is New York SMA Limited Partnership. I think that's the applicant here. It is. New York SMA Limited Partnership versus the town of Oyster Bay. And it says, "The federal court in the Eastern District of New York said, quote, 'A coverage gap exists when a remote user of those services is unable to either connect with a land-based national telephone network or to maintain a connection capable of supporting a reasonable uninterrupted communication. When a coverage gap exists, customers cannot receive and cannot send signals. And when customers pass through a coverage gap, their calls are disconnected. A coverage gap or exists or need for post-site is found to be substantial by the courts where inter alia the coverage needed by a carrier is not limited to a small number of houses in a rural area or merely the interior of buildings in a sparsely populated area,' end quote." That's the language of a federal judge in a case that was brought by this applicant. The Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 does not guarantee 98% coverage. It does not guarantee seamless coverage. The only time they can say that turning us down would be a prohibition is if they prove there is a significant gap in coverage, not even a gap. If there was an absolute gap of a block, that would not be a significant gap. And courts are looking to look at evidence, and one of the things of evidence they look at is the number of dropped calls. If Verizon came here and said, look, on Route 6 for the month of November, we had 243,000 dropped calls, I would say that's evidence of a significant gap. You don't have it here. So while the engineer is very intelligent and accurately stated lots of technical information and even what Verizon would like, what Verizon would like is dramatically different than what the law requires.
I guess, who would like to speak next? For the audience? Yes. Yes. Come on up. Just identify yourself.
Priscilla Eldridge, Rockwald Road. I took second in my age group on that 5K. Yep. Sorry.
I saw you the last time, I'll tell you.
Red face.
I had a car, we had to keep up with you.
I am giving us a gap with a gap for a second. I would like to follow up on the landscaping. And my question would be, the landscaping is within the fencing or outside the fencing?
Outside the fencing.
Okay. We have herds of deer. You will not have rhododendrons after the first year. Your spruces will be, if they're anything under four feet, they will be eaten. All of the, anything that survives will be denuded at the bottom, and you'll have tufts on top, which of course then will not provide. We have everything on our area and probably many of the other areas are all wired in. Otherwise, you can't, you can't have it. So unless you put your stuff inside the gate or come up with something that the deer won't eat, and according to the cooperative extension, a hungry deer will eat anything, you're going to lose all of your landscaping. So...
Thank you.
The land here also contains vines. There's nothing but vines up there. As soon as you open that up to sunlight, those vines will devour everything.
Hello, hello.
Was that a voice in the crowd or what? What do I got here? Who is it?
It's...
Oh. Oh, I can't even see him.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry, I can't even see you. So raise your hand, and you didn't raise your hand, so you're not going to talk. Go ahead.
And related to the landscaping comment, obviously, we would want a deer screen that effectively, and we'd accept the condition that whatever landscaping were proposed be in place long-term. So obviously, deer do eat everything, especially in the winter. They don't read the books, they don't know what they're not supposed to eat. So we would agree to that kind of protection.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ron Sidalter. I just have a question. Would a certified or notarized letter from the residents within proximity of the tower whom the tower is purported to help, saying that they have no problem, be sufficient for the board to deny the application?
Well, it would help. You know, I can't speak to sufficient, but any evidence provided would be, would be sufficient. Yes? Yes, go ahead.
It's funny, there's a, there's a gap here. The engineer said, you know, if you want to show more than just a call here or there, what we typically do is we do call logs. We'll have residents, if you get 40 residents, each making 30 calls, it's hundreds of calls. So if that letter from the residents said, listen, we've sent and received 500 calls per year for the past three years, and we've had no, we were able to initiate, maintain, and conclude all of these communications with no loss in service, you're talking about thousands of calls with no losses. And even if you do have losses, don't forget, sometimes the losses are coming from the other end. You could have somebody on the other end of the cellphone that has bad coverage. But theoretically, if the entire neighborhood, if every person in building submits an affidavit saying that over the period of the past three years, we've handled roughly 1,000 calls each, which comes up to 300,000 calls with no loss in service, I think that's more than just anecdotal evidence.
One thing, your carrier would be important, too.
They'd have to, they'd have to say it's Verizon. If it's AT&amp;T, it's irrelevant. This applicant is claiming it's a gap in in-building coverage for Verizon. So it would have to say, I've had Verizon wireless coverage for three years, and in three years, I've made at least 1,000 phone calls, never had a loss of service in 1,000 phone calls. And if 20 people did that, it's 20,000 phone calls.
But when we're talking about statistically significant, Verizon themselves are saying that they have no coverage gaps in this area. So who has...
On their website.
But that's, that's the...
True.
That's the data they have on the website. When you go to the website and you look.
No, no, no. So the data on the website, we'll respond to that comment. We only received that this evening, even though it was indicated that the information should be 10 days in advance. We've, and just to be, and just to be...
But that's been on the website.
And just to be clear, we'll, we'll explain why that isn't what it's being purported to be. Okay? So we'll, we'll respond to that fully in writing.
Respond in writing.
Yes, we'll, we'll respond. But make, make no mistake about it, we have submitted multiple engineering reports from Verizon's consultant. We've submitted drive test data from Verizon's consultant. Your first, or I should say the zoning board or whomever's consultant it was, Mr. Grafe, stood and testified at the first meeting that there was a significant gap in service. And...
He said that, that the road, the 9A, was seamless?
No. He specifically said there was a significant gap in service.
Based on your information.
And that's fine, whatever he wants to base it on, that consultant...
But he's not here.
Testified. Well, I understand because you took him out of the process. But the fact is, that testimony is on the record. That testimony is on the record, and he did testify to that. So that's, that is all on the record.
Yes, miss...
Callie Gorvick, Cole Spring, 60 Roundhill Road. I'm sorry, I have laryngitis. I just want, I have to address this.
Yes, you've got laryngitis.
I can't.
I'm sorry. I've got laryngitis. And he's on the hearing. You got it.
Why, one hand?
Oh, yeah. It's good. What?
I am very familiar with the landscapes that were shown in the, in the PowerPoint earlier, and I am keenly aware that the places that they chose to show didn't really reveal the problem because they would choose places where that 40-foot difference would make a big difference, where there were other places that the 140 feet was, was clearly visible, including from my house, which they did not, they were counting this 12-square foot area in the back of my house as opposed to the whole rest of the house, first floor and second floor, where there are different vantage points where the balloon was more apparent. And I'd also like to say that I thought it was very unfair that we were not permitted to go onto Mr. Fadden's land in order to see where the, the string holding the balloons was measured. We have no reason to believe that it was actually the length that we were told it was.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My concern is, I'm Ellen Varela Burstein, and I addressed the board last month, and my concern is slightly different than others. Last month, you know, I represented the local Putnam County, Putnam Highlands Audubon Society, a chapter of the National Audubon Society. And at that time, we asked that they begin baseline monitoring of both air, water, and wildlife, particularly as there is a wetlands involved. And I was wondering what the status of that request to get baseline monitoring was.
I guess you'd have to speak to the conservation board on that. That would be their bailiwick.
It isn't something that you would ask the applicant to begin monitoring?
Well, I'm trying to say, is it wildlife and stuff like that? Is that your... I'm a lawsuit.
Yeah. Well, it's hard to talk in specifics for this project, but again, our general approach, and feel free to weigh in here, would be, you know, they're, oh, sorry. I'll just put it this way, everything has an impact. Our approach is to first see if there's another solution. The only thing we regulate in this particular application are, are the wetlands and the 100-foot buffer. The sort of easy way around significant impacts to the habitat and wildlife is to try to find an alternative location that doesn't intrude on the regulated areas. So that, that would be our, our first initial general approach. We wouldn't necessarily ask for air quality monitoring or any extensive, like wildlife monitoring or, or plant monitoring. That's just a very detailed, time-consuming effort that could take literally years. Perhaps for considerably larger development projects, yes. But in this particular case, cell tower or not, we're looking at, you know, this disturbed land, we would try to find an alternative location to minimize the disturbance. One other detail I wanted to bring up, too, is the landscaping plan that we've talked about would be something that we would be interested in reviewing and approving as well, because we have keen interests on soil disturbance, that was mentioned in the back, invasive species, and the, actually, species selection as well.
Thanks for volunteering. Now, you're in charge of the landscaping plan. Thanks. Thank you for volunteering. Yes, yes.
And I just want to mention once again about the visuals. When we did the 160-foot balloon test, your town engineer was there. He was there when we selected the spot, flew the balloon. He requested that we fly it actually at 160 instead of 150. It's my understanding that the photos that we showed today were from people's homes with them present, from their decks in particular in two occasions. We didn't cherry pick photos to make things look better. That I get sensitive over because we don't do that. And I just want to make sure people understand, there were people there, some of the people in this room. We did the best job we could. It was monitored by your town engineer. He was there the whole time. So when people make these statements, I just want to make sure, if you don't like the application, that's fine. If you don't agree with us, that's fine. But when we produce materials and submit them, we do that, we take that very seriously. We don't fudge anything.
The gentleman in the back. That's the voice I heard before, couldn't see. That's okay.
Alan Jordan, 24 White Rocks Lane, Cold Spring. I was pretty certain I knew what I was going to say when I was coming up here the whole night. And I've watched my property up on that screen and every day for, well, six months, however long this has been going on for, I wake up every day and it's pretty much the same thing. I try and visualize where this is going to be and I try and do the best I can to put it out of my mind. I try and talk to my family and try and help them put it out of their minds. And it's hard. It's been really trying in our house. I'm not wealthy. I moved to Cold Spring 15 years ago with my family. Thank you. Thanks. You know, I wake up at 4:00 in the morning, I get on a 508 train for the past 15 years. And I'm not asking for anybody's sympathy saying this, I just want you to know, you know, a little bit what I'm all about because we all get caught up talking in numbers here. And just wanted to make sure you know my face and a little bit about my family. And, you know, when we moved to Cold Spring and built our house 15 years ago, it was, you know, it was very important to us. It was a dream. And we bought that piece of property because we always found ourselves up here on the weekends, canoeing and fond stock, mountain biking, hiking. I mean, we loved this place. We loved this place before we moved here, before we built our house here. And when we got the opportunity to build this house, it was really special for us. Really special. My parents never owned a home. So for me to have an actual house that I owned, it was really special to me and still is. So my point being, when I look at this, I love the outdoors, obviously. I live here. Wow, that's, that's right there. I saw the balloon when they did the balloon test and I understand that that is at a reduced height. But I'm here to tell you, you don't see what I see, obviously. You don't understand where that's going to be. You don't understand when I'm on my patio and I'm out there with my family, friends, like, that's going to be like a black cloud right there. And I can't imagine looking at that. Like, so I know that, those woods, like the back of my hands. I mean, my kids and I, when they were younger, we played in that stream back there. We caught frogs. We caught crayfish. I know what goes on back there. It's wetlands for a good reason. There's slope in there. And the only thing I can think when I look at that is, man, I've seen, and Dino had to leave, he's my neighbor, who's right there, he's 500 feet away from me. We've seen what water does moving down those hills and what it does to trees and how it erodes the base of trees. Trees come down every single windstorm we have there. And I look at that picture and I think to myself, one of those trees come down and it's going to be even worse. That may or may not be adequate. I don't see how it can be. But I worry about that. I worry about when they put a road in. How is that going to impact that little stream that runs behind my house? I've seen that stream turn into a raging river. I don't know how they're going to build this road. I'm not an engineer. I don't, I just don't know. It just sounds like there's so much uncertainty with this and it scares the hell out of me. I just, I just wanted you all to know who I am. And this, I can't imagine if, like I said, I'm not wealthy. If I go to sell my house or have to sell my house, I don't know, what do I, my daughter's petrified for crying out loud. Poor, she's 12 years old, you know? She's, she's convinced she's going to have to move because of this. She's, she's a bright little girl. She's on the internet just like all other kids are. And she sees the videos of other people and what they've had to do and what they've gone through when cell towers are erected and they're this far from their house. You know, this is going to be devastating to my property values. You heard Mr. Campanelli, you know? Again, I'm not wealthy. I'm like most of you. I, I built this house, I'm still paying for my house in hopes that I have equity in it when it comes time for me to sell it. I'm not looking forward to the day I have to sell it. I don't want to move from here. I love this place. But it's going to be devastating to our family. And I can't imagine for a lot of other people in this room, it's not going to leave a mark as well, if not be devastating. So I appreciate everybody's time and I know it's been a long night and it's been a long six months, but I just wanted you to know who I am and just a little bit about my family. Sure.
So what we've said in the conservation board is that we would often look for another spot on the parcel, right? And in this case, that's Mr. Fadden's property, which he's only outlined one parcel for you guys to lease. But if there was a spot, since you know the land so well, is there another spot on Mr. Fadden's land that would be maybe less visible to all the residents on this, that are, you know, seem to be mostly in this one area?
Well, before, we mentioned being further south, right? Which would be moving, if I'm correct, right? Going towards Route 9. So that would be the other side of the property. Now, I've, I've been to Roger's house and Callie's house and that, you know, I've never, I don't take liberties with other people's land, so to speak. But we're back there in our stream and that's as far as we go, so I don't have intimate knowledge of everything on his property. But I would think that there's, there's got to be. On that other side, there's got to be something that's suitable. There just has to be. You look at it and you just, you know there is.
Because I think that's something that the conservation board would be interested in getting away from the wetlands and pulling the, you know, pulling the proposed location somewhere else on that property, meet the same, you know, requirements and all.
But when we built our house, and you can look on Google Earth, and you can look at my footprint and my neighbor's footprint, Dino, we took out a minimal amount of trees. We didn't go in there and clear cut. And when they told me to respect the wetlands, 100 feet buffer, 120 feet, excuse me, I respected it. I don't touch anything in there. Nothing. And haven't for 15 years. My kids, hey, Dad, can we, you know, put a jungle gym back in there? I can't, guys, you know? But we'll put a rope swing up somewhere, you know, in one of the trees. We'll make do, you know? We'll go play in the stream. I mean, I think most people here, I mean, if you live in Cold Spring as a kid, you played in the woods, right? And you respected the woods and you loved the woods. That's what I taught my kids. So, yeah, I think there is, there's got to be something. There's got to be something that doesn't harm people, that don't alter people's lives so drastically.
Would it be feasible to model with the models that we currently have without doing a lot of additional work to see whether this general area might actually have better coverage? I'd sort of direct this question to our engineer.
Pierre Kahn would have to do that because they are the only ones that have access to Verizon's to fly it every day.
But the problem we have, the big problem we have, you know, even if they wanted to look for a location, the owner of the land refuses that.
I thought our requirement would be to propose that, another alternative. And so this is a reasonable alternative and it's on his property. That's his business decision whether he wants to lease it to these people or not. It's our request, that's all.
I mean, I think the problem is, I still haven't heard the spot.
I don't know the spot. I would leave that to you guys to figure it out.
Well, I think, I think what the problem is, is that we're talking about a spot that's very speculative, that may or may not meet the set marks, that quite simply, if it's the spot I'm thinking of, it's closer to another resident and is more in line with that view shed. So what I would say is if you think there's a better spot, let us know what it is and we'll certainly take a look at it. Although I do agree with the chairman, Mr. Fadden has already said he's unwilling to lease it. But we're not unwilling to go back to him.
Right.
But you have to tell us the spot. We can't just be, there's another spot on the property.
Mr. Fadden's house on the top of the hill, or a spot up there.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Higher on the hill.
It's probably, you know, and I would think that everybody, my neighbors would certainly, I think anybody, I think anybody who would stand here in my shoes right now would have a hard time getting their head around how it is that one man, one company, and how it is, how do they have the right to affect my life in such a negative manner? I mean, this is, we're not talking about a couple dollars. We're talking about kids that are going to have to be relocated potentially. We're talking about a house value that's, God, it's going to be worth nothing. You know?
The board has taken this, everything seriously.
I know, I know. And I'm going to step away from the microphone because I know it's been a long night for everybody.
No, no, no. Please. I want you to, there's no time limit here. I don't set time limits, okay?
I do appreciate that.
And I want everybody to get their, you know, opinion out. But I can say, the board does listen to all your concerns.
Thank you. And again, thanks, thanks very much, everybody. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Gorovic.
Roger Gorovic, 60 Roundhill Road. I had a long speech written and I'm not going to do it because I think Andrew covered an awful lot for everybody to digest tonight. First, I want to compliment the boards. You guys have just been tremendous. The attorney, everybody involved in this, our officials, Richard Shea, Nancy, Mike, John Van Tassel, everybody's been involved. Everybody cares about this community. When I look at those pictures that were put up there, and you may say that they weren't selectively picked, that's up to you. You know, I used to be the president of the Appraisers Association of America. And one of the schools that, in the art world, that's so well revered, is the Hudson River and Hudson Valley School. We have Frederick Church paintings. We have Ismael Johnson paintings. They depict the beauty of what we have up here that's so special and so dear to all of us. As the former president of the Appraisers Association of America, I tell you right now that if I put a cell tower on those paintings, they're worthless. That's what you're doing to our community if you succeed. So what, what does it mean as far as all of us are concerned who live here? We have to protect this area. We have Hudson Highlands to trust to be involved. We have Open Space. We have Scenic Hudson. They've spent millions to preserve what's gone up here, what's gone on here, and that everybody decided to move here for. They came to this community because it was beautiful. It was special. The people here are special. We don't take it lightly. We are a community. And the fact of the matter is, we will go forward as a community whether this occurs or it doesn't. But a lot of us are going to have a really bad feeling if it does. In the name of progress, this is not progress. This is going backwards. Alan is 100% correct in what he had to say. He worked hard. So did I. My wife and I worked hard to get our home. It's very special as far as we're concerned. We didn't move up here 17 years ago to think about the idea of having a cell tower stuck in front of us. That's ridiculous. It's beyond absurd. And the worst of all this, for all of us that have gone through this, it's an emotional toll. We didn't need this. We didn't ask for it. I have no problem with my cell phone. I can go through and I can show you the last 500 calls that are made, not one has ever been dropped. All in my house, never one is dropped. This is nonsense. They're telling you straight out, there's no gap in service here. We've discussed it. They haven't proved anything. They haven't put it in front of you. They don't care. This is about money. And all they care about is making money? They're in the business of making money. I don't blame them from that point of view. But go somewhere and put it somewhere where it doesn't affect people's lives. You have a great responsibility. And I, again, congratulate all of you for giving your time and effort. This has gone beyond. And an emotional toll that I'm sure it takes on all of you is not insignificant because you have to hear people gripe, people get upset about things naturally because their homes are being attacked. And if you attack my home, I protect my home. It's what I taught my kids. It's what my father taught me. If you're attacked, you protect yourself. If you get emotional, that's okay. At least you're being real. I wish you great deliberations. I'm confident in your outcome. And I think Andrew's given you all the answers and the ammunition that you need. So...
The gentleman in the back. That's the voice I heard before, couldn't see. That's okay.
Alan Jordan, 24 White Rocks Lane, Cold Spring. I was pretty certain I knew what I was going to say when I was coming up here the whole night. And I've watched my property up on that screen and every day for, well, six months, however long this has been going on for, I wake up every day and it's pretty much the same thing. I try and visualize where this is going to be and I try and do the best I can to put it out of my mind. I try and talk to my family and try and help them put it out of their minds. And it's hard. It's been really trying in our house. I'm not wealthy. I moved to Cold Spring 15 years ago with my family. Thank you. Thanks. You know, I wake up at 4:00 in the morning, I get on a 508 train for the past 15 years. And I'm not asking for anybody's sympathy saying this, I just want you to know, you know, a little bit what I'm all about because we all get caught up talking in numbers here. And just wanted to make sure you know my face and a little bit about my family. And, you know, when we moved to Cold Spring and built our house 15 years ago, it was, you know, it was very important to us. It was a dream. And we bought that piece of property because we always found ourselves up here on the weekends, canoeing and fond stock, mountain biking, hiking. I mean, we loved this place. We loved this place before we moved here, before we built our house here. And when we got the opportunity to build this house, it was really special for us. Really special. My parents never owned a home. So for me to have an actual house that I owned, it was really special to me and still is. So my point being, when I look at this, I love the outdoors, obviously. I live here.
that we all need to do a proper analysis of this and come up with a proper decision, that that opportunity is given to us. I've got one supporter.
Was it even your wife?
It was my, it was my sister.
Sister, sister.
That's a long story.
Your wife didn't even clap for you.
Right. That's not unusual. As, as Alan Jordan said, my wife and I have also been here, and the land is very special to us too. We bought this property 36 years ago, 37 years ago. We've had a house there for 35 years. We've always looked to the south and to the west, and we will now see a, a cell tower sitting in front of us. Even if it's reduced to 140 feet, we're still gonna see it. The, the balloon tests that have been done, including the second one, was done on November 1st, I believe is the date. There still were a lot of leaves on the trees. And those pictures that were shown by Mr. Xavier showed that there were a lot of leaves still on the trees. Once those leaves are off, if you were to do it now, it's gonna be a different picture. The other is, I saw a number of pictures that were produced. My wife went around with the folks that were making the pictures, and in a couple of cases pointed out, no, look this way. Take a shot here. And it's interesting, because I saw some of the shots that were taken, and the most revealing ones were not in the presentation that I saw tonight, with all due respect. There were other pictures that were more revealing of the tower.
Any homeowners take other pictures?
Yes, yeah.
There's lots of them.
I'd be happy to provide them.
From our house, every room except one, we will see that tower every day that we are in that house. From our deck, which faces directly to the tower, we will see it. It's, it's, again, a shock to me that a person that has 91 acres, 64 on this piece, and the 2070 he has up on top, picks the spot that's 200 feet from our property line. The other is that, that particular piece of property, as I've mentioned to the Conservation Board, I was trying to find some records on it. The town had no records, and I didn't think there were any at the county. But, just recently, after persistence, I found out that the county does have some records about those pipes being put in and their reason. And there was an analysis of that done by the engineers. And they're still pulling out those records. And I hope to have some more information on that very, very soon. Would also implore that the shot clock be extended so we could actually see what that was. I wanted to ask Mr. Menkes if I could. You indicated that if the, if I'm correct, that if the Nelsonville Tower is not built, the McHill's Corner would be more effective, if you will, in covering 301, but that there is a gap, a quarter mile gap, or as you said, 1,350 feet approximately, north of 301? Is that directly north of 301 attached to where 301 is, or is it somewhere further up?
Further up.
Okay, thank you. He's saying it's further up on Route 9. Would you be able to identify that on, I have a map here, actually.
Yeah, I'm not in the habit of making the applicant's case, but there it is, right here.
How far north of 301 is it?
Here's the scale. It looks like about a mile.
That's it?
About a mile.
About a mile north. Do you know the name of that road by any chance?
You, you probably know the area better than me.
The reason I ask that is because what we actually did was we produced a map that would show the property owners in the areas that were identified by Purecon as where the so-called gap is. And in looking at this...
Can you look yourself?
Yeah, sorry.
Can I get the...
She can actually hide behind it. If you take a look at this, the red is, are all the residential homes in the area. You can notice down here, there's quite a few, and that's the trailer park, I would call, just south of 301. And the yellow is Route 9. And the point of this is that within this total gap areas, I understand it, there's, what's the number of homes? Is 135 homes, was it? There were 430, there were supposedly 430 individuals, approximately 135 homes. So, we're building an additional tower in addition to McHill's, to basically cover 135 homes, apparently. Now, that, that's also assuming that all of them have Verizon. And I think Mr. Menkes had mentioned that north of 301, at some point in his deliberations, and this was at the last meeting and at this meeting, was that something like 37% were Verizon customers?
Let me give the statistics to the best of my memory. The cellular penetration rate in the United States is about 88%. I think that was measured the end of, or the middle of this year. That means that 88% of the population has a cellphone. Verizon's market share is 37%. So, 37% of the 88% of Verizon's customers, that 37% was the end of the third quarter of this year. I also looked at the, the numbers, and, and I have to admit, there's been a lot of numbers thrown around with regard to the population and the number of buildings and so forth. And 430 people, it isn't clear where that number comes from and what area it covers. If you, excuse me for a minute. If you, if you take that number and you multiply it by the cellular penetration level, you come out with 330 people approximately. If you then multiply that by the Verizon market share, you come out with about 123 people. Now, that 123 people are divided between the two areas that are identified as being less than reliable service. So, first of all, if you believe that the 88% penetration rate is evenly distributed across the United States, you have to first make that assumption. I don't know the answer to that. Then you have to assume that Verizon's penetration, or market share, is also evenly distributed across the United States, which it probably isn't. So, we've already made three assumptions. The population, the distribution of the cellular penetration, and Verizon's market share assumption in this area. So, you come out with 123 people, divided between two areas that are identified to have less than reliable service. So, that's about 60 people in each area that do not have reliable service, just to make it clear. Now, if I can add, and I don't, I apologize for taking your time. There was also some reference to counting the number of buildings. And I have to admit that I went through it many times, and I couldn't figure out what, what the logic was between doing that, because I haven't seen too many buildings making phone calls recently. Okay? And if, if I read it correctly, it appeared to me that there were more buildings on the 301, Route 301, than there were on Route 9, where people lived, because a lot of the buildings identified on Route 9 were enterprise businesses, which are closed in the evening on Sundays and on holidays. And, you know, I'm not suggesting that there's any priority for an emergency police or fire call from either Route 9 or Route 301. But, just take into consideration, we are talking about very small numbers here.
I just have to respond to that, because it's really important. Those, those were not the numbers. The numbers, actually, in the Purecon report, was that in the gap area, that would be left with the McHill's site. There would be 36 buildings, and, and that's a commercial gap area, as opposed to five residential buildings in the gap area along Route 301, from the proposed site at 50 Vineyard, assuming that no site would ever be built in the village of Nelsonville, which, which I believe is a false assumption. But, more importantly, just to say, the number of residents far underestimates the number of persons. Because obviously, whether it's a residential building or a commercial building, the number of people that would be visiting that location far exceeds the number of people that may, that may pursue into the census, be there or not be there. And obviously, the census data is always a little bit out of, out of tune. This is mobile technology. These are people that are using their phones, their laptops, their mobile devices. And to make an assumption that there's 100, or 120, or 60 people in a particular gap area, I think is without a basis. Thank you.
If I may, on that point, there's a small number of people that are in the area, and the majority of people that would be passing through the...
You back and forth here all night, Laura.
No, I understand that.
Okay, okay. All right, let me explain to you. Let me, let me, give me a chance here. Now, somebody come up tonight, come up with a great idea, about all the residents in the area. If they could produce affidavits so many, over three years, and so on and so forth, you know, that would be, that would help us. We need tangible things. I mean, we have one consultant say one thing, one consultant could say another thing. Okay, you know, I mean, who's to right, who's wrong? I don't think anybody in this board has the knowledge or the expertise to decide that. Okay? But, if I get 50 people telling me they live there, and they may call, haven't had a dropped call, or ten dropped calls in three years or something like that, that's something I could look at.
I can tell you that we've had Verizon and cellphones for many years. It's always been Verizon, and we've never, to my knowledge, ever had a dropped phone call from inside our house, or anywhere in Phillips Town.
Well, I would suggest, and she'll the, one of the associations...
We will.
To get as many people as you can in the area to, to present us with that. Okay, go ahead.
We'll go back on the record. I think the other is that the folks that are passing through, or accessing Route 9 or 301, whatever, obviously would be in-vehicle coverage, and they've already admitted that that, there is no problem with in-vehicle coverage. From our perspective, there's no gap in service. We, we have used our cellphone, as I said, for years. Our neighbors have. Many of my friends and neighbors have Verizon. I think the majority of people have Verizon. And there's never been an issue. My brother-in-law, we get together twice a week. He's always using his phone to even access stuff on the, on the web and the internet. So, and he's never had a problem. I would indicate that at the last meeting, and, because I raised it up in my conversation, my comments, relative to Verizon's website, that their website says clearly they have 100% coverage in this area. If you take a look at the coverage map, there are no gaps. It's solid as can be. Our field tests obviously confirm that as well. I did one continuous phone call throughout the whole gap area, and never had an issue with it. Nor did, have I ever had any issue in the town of Phillips Town around. As a matter of fact, I drive 301 every day. And there is one spot that's way over by Carmel, and I could tell you exactly where it is. And it cuts out for 10 seconds right there. There's no other place on 301 where that happens. Nor on Route 9, or 301 going into Cold Spring, or any of the places that they indicate there is. There's another thing, there's a thing called Root Metrics that is on the website, and it shows also that there's no gaps in service. This is a company that tests mobile network performance from a consumer's point of view, and they provide objective, accurate, and unbiased assessments of performance in a helpful and easy-to-understand terms. And I have a second map that we produced on the basis of the information that's on their website. I put this together so you can see who Root Metrics is. And, thank you.
I've got a lot of prop, prop...
Yeah, absolutely. So, this is, again, the, the area where there's supposedly gaps. What the Root Metrics does, in addition to showing that there's no gaps, and by the way, green is good, the orange is fair, both of these two colors are not on there that would be poor and bad. So, all of it, and the vast majority of it, I'd say 90% or 95% of it is, is good. Now, this is based on Root Metrics, which is an independent company that characterized what consumer mobile experience is. And the way they do this is, they test with the same smartphones that we, as consumers, use. They test the same mobile activities that consumers use their smartphones for on a daily basis. They test at same times that consumers use their smartphones, phones, and they test in the same places where they're used. If, this actually also, they reflect the decibel measurements. And in the green, it basically is negative 96 to better than that, which would be then a lower number. And the, I'll say, the orange color there, or tan color, which is fair, they say runs from 97 to, I think it's 105. All of that area, as you can see, the vast majority of that area is very good service. This is an independent company, this, hm?
Who is this org?
They're called Root Metrics. And it's rootmetrics.com. If you go on the website, you can see this stuff yourself.
What was the, what was this, 90...
Was, I have that, if I can, I can do the exact number here, if I can pull it. I'm going off memory. I believe it was, good was minus 96 to a lower number, which is greater strength. They, I think they said to minus 50. And then, for fair, it was 97 to, I think it was 105. Negative 105. These numbers kind of flipped from what the...
Are these materials part of materials that have been, is this being presented now? Has this been provided to the board?
This is being...
Provided now?
Right now? By presentation, yes. You know, this, we got off our website, actually, today. There is, I also wanna be sure that is entered into the record in the minutes, the memorandum in opposition that I handed to you this evening, just so that you have that as well. There's a couple of other things I would like to mention, and that is that, I don't know, did you hear back from the Putnam County Planning Department relative to their review of the information that they...
No, the only letter I have is original.
Original, okay. Is there a requirement to have them respond in some way, prior to your...
I'll have to ask the attorney about it.
Yeah, they just have to respond within a certain period of time of the submission of the application.
Well, I guess what he's asking is, do they have to, they, they said modification, but they haven't got back to it. I mean, I guess, couldn't, could this be voted on without their approval?
All we need is their response within 30 days. We can vote on it, we can decide it, as long as we have their response, whether it's, we like it or we dislike it.
But, we haven't gotten their response. So, can we vote on it without their response?
Well, they have 30 days. They didn't respond.
We can vote on it before they respond, then?
I think they did respond.
Well, they just responded that they needed...
Modification.
Yeah, they need modifications.
What you're saying is they didn't approve it.
Right.
Was it approval or denial of the modification?
It was neither or, and there's been testimony from, in the record, that the materials that they indicated that they didn't have, they in fact have, and we haven't heard anything since that time.
Haven't heard anything.
So, I assume they have it.
Okay. So, in ending, I would say, I didn't realize, I thought McHill's Corner, if that, if the 50 Vineyard was built, I was under the understanding that the McHill's Corner Tower was coming down. Obviously, it's just Verizon's equipment coming off of it. So, that, that tower will remain. So, we will have, the 50 Vineyard, we'll have the one up by Minorities, which is on Tower Road on Route 9. We'll have McHill's Corner, and potentially, we'll have another one in Nelsonville. And we also have the Sky Lane. I, I think that's gonna make it 11 cell towers in Phillips Town, if all of them are approved.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I would, I would just ask that, you know, the shot clock be told so that the additional analysis could be done.
We're gonna discuss that now.
Thank you.
Everybody, everybody's been hurt tonight, I think. I remember, Mr. Gorioso, yes, I'm sorry. I've got somebody in the doorway here. This is the last person for tonight. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Bevan Harris. I live in, at 61 Moffett Road in Cold Spring. I'm here to support and to communicate my concern about this. My property, my house, that my brother and I built, abuts the Rockledge Road. I think, we can talk numbers all night long. I think we need to bring this back to the basics of why we live here, and, and ask ourselves, is having more service that we already have necessary? And the impact of devaluing our properties, or imposing our views, or our general feel in our homes, worth it to, to prosperity, or to advance ourselves? You know? I, I mentioned in a previous meeting that I love the fact that, that Phillips Town and Cold Spring has dirt roads. I don't expect to go up Indian Brook Road and have a paved, smooth ride. I like the fact that it's a dirt road still, or Old Emily Post Road. It's what gives the character of this area. I grew up in Brooklyn. I don't need a cell tower over my, you know, over my roof. I have perfect service. I need cell service in New York City at City Hall, because I, it drops there. I'm a sales rep. I know where service exists and where it doesn't. And I've been a contractor. I worked on the Gorovics house. I know their view. And it looks down, I... it looks down, I would look down on the cell tower, and the tower would be about 60 vertical feet above my home. It's a real concern, and I think, I plead to all of you to look at this from the standpoint of it's in your, it's on your property, or it's behind your house, and just evaluate. Because it's easy to look at, oh, it's, it's not there. It's not my backyard. This affects all of us. We, you know, part of why we live here is because we don't have, you know, the largest parking lot is at Foodtown, right? Or one of. And we like the quaint country feel of where we're at. And if we keep building, you build that parking lot, or you build that cell tower, it's not going away in our lifetime. And you made a joke about in your lifetime. It's not, I, that's fine, but I'm, I'm frustrated that we're joking, because in a week--
Three hours, after three hours, you start to--
No, I get it, I get it, you know. I've, I've been up since 5:02, but in a week, it's going to be Christmas and the holidays. And a week after that, it's the first. And then a week after that, we're at the, the tipping point, right? So, I just, I ask that we all look at this and take it from the standpoint of it's on your property, or it's looming over your head, and we make active, proactive decisions. I think there's a radio tower on 301 that stands well above everything in the area. It's not that, we don't want to have the services and the effective emergency, you know, response that we need. I've been a EMT in town, you know, I understand the value of that and communication. But there are other options, and we need to find them before we allow someone to come in and bully their way into forcing us into a decision that we don't want, and I, most of the community does not want. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Gorioso.
I would like to take just two seconds on some of the RF--
Oh, sure.
--information. Again, the code, the code does not require a significant gap. That would be, as I've mentioned before, that would be a discussion de novo, or anew in front of a federal court judge. What the code says is that an alternative site is undesirable, including for technical reasons, that's the term it uses, that's the criteria. The only requirement for proving need under the code is information establishing the present need for the proposed tower shall be submitted. It doesn't say, again, anything about a significant gap. Whether people, you know, provide letters saying that they've made phone calls or haven't made phone calls, again, I think, I think the reliability of that data would be speculative at best, particularly given the fact that there is an existing tower online partially covering this area. And that's very important to understand, that there is some coverage in the area, because McKeel's is actually operational. And what we've shown in, in the voluminous number of propagation maps, is that there is an in-vehicle coverage gap at 21 megahertz. Whether that's significant or not, you know, leave it to your consultants to either opine or not opine. We've shown the in-building coverage gap even at 700 megahertz, which is the, which is the frequency that covers the furthest and would have the least size gap. You've heard from your own consultant that our design criteria is, and if I'm misquoting him, I'm sure he'll correct me, is a reasonable design criteria, and yet we've still shown less than desirable coverage based on our design criteria. We believe that's a significant gap in any event. So, the code only requires that we show present need for the tower. Letters, to the extent that folks have coverage and made phone calls, given the fact that McKeel's is operational, we believe would be, would be speculative. We'd ask the board to, to, to schedule this for a decision at the January meeting. If, if your January meeting is January 8th, and it was scheduled for a decision on that night, we would agree to extend the shot clock from January 5th to January 8th for the purposes of a decision.
One question I have with that is, if I close the public hearing tonight, I, we can't accept any more information. I know that the, some of the residents have spoke about affidavits, letters about phone calls. I know you say it's not important, it doesn't count and like that, but I would like to give them a chance to provide that. So, how could we do that with--
Well, I, my suggestion would be-- Starts a 62-day clock, that he has to have a resolution to.
Go ahead.
My suggestion would be, would be, obviously in this discussion, my understanding is that you also wanted to submit some materials. There was testimony about Verizon having advertised or on their website, and you wanted to submit materials on that. So, I think the appropriate thing would be to hopefully have some, you know, limited information, hopefully not a three-hour, but, I mean, it's up to the board.
Can I, can I--
Can I limit the, the public hearing to one hour?
Well, I mean, yeah, that, that's--
I need if I continue to public here.
Yeah, what, what I'm simply suggesting is, I heard from some members of the public, as well as the applicant, that they wanted the opportunity to submit some materials in reply to things that were said, and to address things that, that were said. So, assuming that's okay with the board for the January 8th meeting, my recommendation is obviously not to close the meeting, because there would be some limited information on the 8th, and then after consideration of that, absent any other agreement, we would decide that on the 8th, decide the application on the 8th.
Would that be acceptable to you?
Sure. I would like to ask for a copy by tomorrow of the documents that were submitted tonight, so we can respond. And I would ask that the responses by everyone be due, which is normally your, your custom, 10 days in advance of the next meeting.
Okay. What, basically, I was saying, any information, got any additional information anybody wants to hand in, which would be photos, I know someone spoke about photos of towers, or, I said, anything that they think is relevant, affidavits or phone calls, it's got to be in by 10 days of, of the next meeting, which would be January 8th, okay? And I want to give everybody a chance to submit what they can. It's not going to be a lengthy meeting like tonight. This is it. You know, one second, let me finish. And, you know, we'll go over that, what information is, and also by you with the, your, for the website thing, we'll go over that at that meeting, and then we'll close the hearing, and then we, we'll make a decision at night.
Thank you very much.
Is that suitable to you?
Do we need, do we need the, the shot clock extension in writing from you?
No, we could mutually agree to extend it this evening to January 8th.
Okay, because it's a matter of public record.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Very much for your time.
Thank you, yes.
Just one concern, I believe that Mr. Campanelli had mentioned that it would be worthwhile to have an RF engineer do--
Could you come up, speak up for him?
I think it was Mr. Campanelli had indicated that it might be worthwhile to have an RF engineer do in-building testing. That, I don't know how quickly that could be done, or if that's something that could be--
From listening to the RF engineer before, I think it would be, you know, very extremely difficult, you know. I'll ask him, and, Mr.--
I will, I do not have the equipment to do it in a statistically significant fashion.
Okay. So, I understand what he's saying, you know, he doesn't have the equipment. It's too late for us to get another RF engineer at this point in time to, to do that. I think that the affidavit, still, from the people who actually live there, I know, even though Mr. Gorioso says it doesn't matter, would be important to the board.
What about requesting Verizon to provide us the dropped logs to show--
They, they won't do that.
They can't do that?
No, I asked that on the first meeting.
The drop, the drop call data is--
Privacy issues or something?
No, the drop call data, number one, is, is, again, anecdotal. Whether someone drops a call or doesn't drop a call could be a function of, they know there's a gap, and they might not initiate a call, or they might terminate the call in advance of the, in advance of the drop, knowing that they're going to drop it in a particular location. So, the drop call data, we believe, is anecdotal, and, and we rest on our record of what we've already submitted.
Could you provide it, though?
No, we're not going to provide it, because we believe--
You refuse to provide it.
Well, we believe it's unreliable.
Okay, refuse to provide it, fine, thank you.
Could I ask Mr. Manki's a question? Is there any surrogate data that can be used rather than the testing you're talking about?
I'm sorry--
Is there any surrogate data? I mean, for instance, you know, on the conservation board, we can't often ask applicants to make a full delineation of the wildlife in a wetland, so we'll use surrogate markers, such as soil types. You know, and it's done, you know, in conservation biology all the time, to try to make something a little bit quicker that gives you a good scientific estimate.
Yep, I understand the question. And I don't know where Mr. Gorioso is hiding, but let me also address this comment to him. The 4G LTE technology asks the mobile unit to send a tremendous amount of information back to the core of the network. So, in addition to, you know, just handling the bearer information, whether it be voice or data, your handset is sending hundreds of measurements and statistics back to the network, in addition to just our reference signal receive power, and then there's reference signal quality indicators. There's information on adjacent cell site signals. It also sends GPS information. So, every one of those measurements that that phone makes can be associated with its location. So, Verizon has software, and they had this for 3G, they had it for 2G, and there are vendors that make software that do what's called deep packet inspection. They latch on to the interfaces in the network, and they figure out what packets, going back to the core of the network, contain measurement information, and which packets contain GPS data. And they can plot that. Verizon has software that they've used in the past, I believe, and I could be mistaken, it was called call marker data, or call traffic, or something like that. It's a internally-produced software, but there are commercial vendors that have the same. And what they do then is they make measurements, again, statistically significant, because they can measure millions of calls and associate the call performance with the location of the mobile. And Verizon has shown this data in previous submissions to boards where it has been asked for. I know because I was at those meetings.
And just, just in response, we do have a situation, we have an existing site up and running. And also, you know, so there is, is going to be confusion over where exactly these calls are. You could say GPS tracking, plus or minus. We're limiting things to very fine areas as far as the in-building gap at 700 megahertz, the in-vehicle gap at 2100. So, I know it all sounds great, and, and it sounds like we provide reams and, reams and of additional information, but we believe, given what the code requires, which is very minimal, which is radial maps, which we've provided. In addition to that, we've provided the drive testing data, which is the actual data. We've gone above and beyond what the code actually requires, and we've met the standard of, of what the courts have said is the proper methodology to provide this type of information to show a significant gap.
Let me ask you a question. On January 8th, in the event of a snowstorm or something like that, you know, I'm not going to be here. Can you, are you willing to, you know, go a day, a couple of days--
Yeah, of course. If there's a natural disaster, what I would suggest is your counsel call me either that day or the day before, and we'll work something out.
I don't want you to show up in a snowstorm and say--
I'm sure of it.
You'll win because you're here.
We certainly don't want to put anyone's, you know, life at risk as far as coming here.
Okay, thank you. And also, we have another, just, no, it's going to be very, it's not going to be a long meeting, okay? We'll go over the new information, and that's it, because we'll probably have three or four other applications. I know you have, what, you have a, Mr. Gorioso, you have another application coming for us, right? The radio tower or something like that?
Right.
Okay. And there's a couple others. So, we'll go over the information that's supplied, the extra information, and then we'll close the, close the meeting, and then the board will make a decision. And I, I imagine a conservation board is going to say, are you in agreement with that? That it would be here, January 8th, and then, like you say, after--
I have a question about sequence. In terms of our decision on the wetlands permit, and your decision on the variance, what comes first? How do we make these decisions?
It doesn't have to be in sequence. I mean, theoretically, you could have decided this tonight if you wanted to, but--
It's coordinated.
Yeah. So, the plan would be to decide both on the 8th.
Okay.
You can go first.
I think the--
It's coordinated.
Excuse me. I think the consensus of the conservation board is we would like to suggest another site, but it's, from your response, we're shooting at a moving target because you tell us, well, give us an exact site. So, I'd like to throw it out to all the neighbors. If you have a suggestion, that's something that would be less visible, give us something to shoot at. I'd like to see some sort of indication from the modeling, if there is anything whatsoever. Yes, one, one second, please, let me finish. I will forget what I was going to say. So, we have something to shoot at. And if you can give us any help, we don't, we, we're not telling you we don't want a tower ever anywhere. We all understand. If there needs to be a tower, but be reasonable. Give us something to shoot at.
The landlord has said he will not offer any else placed on the property. I, I think what you're saying is reasonable, but I also think it's unrealistic in that I don't think you're going to get a consensus, because I truly believe that someplace else on the property is going to be more impactful to other folks. And let me give you an example. If you look at the visual renderings and actually look at them carefully, you'll see the tower from Mr. Gorovik's back deck, which is where that photograph is taken from, is off to the right-hand side and below the tree line. If you go out into the vineyard area, you're going to be wide, wide open into the, into an open area, that's going to be more in his view line out to the mountains. And everyone can disagree, and they can, and they can, and they could say otherwise, but if you look carefully at those renderings, look at the view shed map, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about.
I appreciate what you're saying.
If you go closer to Route 9--
I appreciate what you're saying, please.
Let me finish, because I think it's important. If you go closer to Route 9, you will hear from the same residents that were upset about 59 Lanesgate Road. They were at prior meetings. They came out, they did not want it at the landfill because it was closer to their residences.
I get it.
And it, so, I, so it's not that we're being difficult--
I get it.
But I truly believe, if you say, put it someplace else, it's not going to be the magic pill. But if there's a consensus, and I'm wrong, and you have your counsel call us between now and then and say, everyone agrees this is a better spot, and put an X on the, on the map, we'll certainly look at it in good faith. I can tell you that.
Good enough. Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't--
No, but, you know, I've been on the first wetlands committee, which became the conservation board, for over 20 years. We have never, in my knowledge, granted a wetland permit to cross whether it's a wetland or a buffer unless there has been no other way. There's been no other place on the property. So, you're really asking us a lot, and I just want you to be aware of that.
I, I just don't think that's the standard under your code, that's all.
Well, I am, just want you to be aware of what's been done for precedent.
Joel Cooper from Rockwell Road.
Is this going to be the last thing?
I'm going to be--
Okay.
A minute. The code says that there should be research about alternative sites, particularly high buildings, or high structures, or tall structures, and high structures. The highest structure in this area is Mr. Fadden's home. You could have a nice cell tower array put disguised as chimneys on top of his home, or other places, but I mean, even to be serious, he's at 980 feet, this is at 680. I am sure there are places in that property that you could create a bunker, or some other kind of disguise, camouflaged by trees, and I've seen pictures of this, magnolia trees, 10 feet tall. You wouldn't even know that there's a cell tower there. There is plenty of space to put. Now, he said he's not going to do that. And my last comment is, if you need any fact to show that a cell tower is harmful to property, to property values, look at where he wants this tower, as far from his house, as, excuse me, as possible. Thank you.
Well, like I said, the problem they run at that, even if they're willing to look at any other side of the property, Mr. Fadden says that they can only put it close to you.
I know.
I make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Don't make, you make a motion. All in favor? Okay, so, 7:30 on the 8th, it'll be here. That'll be here, yeah, it's going to have to be.